Get started, everybody. We have a quorum. Welcome, if we could start, I'm just going to say standing because if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Cookie, if we could have a roll call, please.
Susan Rowinsky. President. Clifford Robbins.
Here.
Rafael Reyes.
Present.
And Greg Sinclair is absent.
And we have not heard, have we heard that Greg is excused or maybe tied up in traffic, but we have a quorum, so I think we can move forward without him at this point. The consent calendar, we actually have minutes from both the regular and the special meetings of March 13th, unless somebody wants to pull and discuss. Do we have any comments on either of those or questions? Then I will move approval of both those minutes. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the minutes are passed, consent calendar's done. Public comment, this is a time for persons wishing to speak on any issue that's not on the agenda, noting that we cannot necessarily respond to it at this point because it hasn't been agendized. Do we have any speaker slips?
No, I have none.
All right. Anybody in the audience who meant to fill out a speaker slip would like to speak? Seeing none, public comment, done. New business, first item, Cal Water, general rate case application update. Staff.
So, Cal Water, please come forward. We have invited Cal Water this evening to give an informational report on their proposed current rate cases in front of the CPUC.
Thank you very much. Just a note to the commissioners that we are receiving a presentation, we can obviously ask questions and give comments, but we're not being asked to take any action or make a recommendation on this one.
This one, is that okay? Good evening, thanks for having us. My name is Kevin McCusker and I'm with California Water Service. I would just want to introduce some of my colleagues who are here to provide expert-level responses if you have any specific questions. With me tonight I have Ross Moylan, who is our district manager for our Bay Shore District, Mike Oats, who's the assistant district manager here in Bay Shore. So there are chief operators here for the system. Scott Wagner, who's our director of capital planning and water resources. Shannon McGovern, who's our Northern Regional Community Affairs Specialist, and Kyle Ramey, who's our Northern Region Conservation Coordinator. And so if any questions come up, I might refer them to answer it if it's an in-depth question. So we just came to talk a little bit about our infrastructure improvement plan, and I'll try to move through it as quickly as possible, but feel free to ask questions as we move through it. So just as a little background, California Water Service has been around for 92 years, going on 93 years. We have service areas across California in addition to here in what we call our Bay Shore District. We serve about 2 million Californians through about 500,000 service connections and looks at the scale and the scope of what we do, more than 400,000 water quality tests per year to ensure that we meet all federal and state primary and secondary standards. And if you took all of the water main that we have and laid it end to end, it would stretch from Manhattan to Beijing, so just to give you a little bit of an idea of the scale of our operation. Here in San Mateo, we've been part of the community since 1931, about 106,000 people through about 24, a little bit more than 25,000 service connections. And, you know, there's a lot that goes into the water infrastructure that people don't think about. A lot of what we do is out of sight, our infrastructure is underground, and that's good if people don't, in a way, if people don't have to think about us, because that usually indicates that things are running pretty well if people don't have to think about the quality of their water system. But as a result, people often forget, you know, kind of what an integral part of the community we are. We've got about 250 miles of main here in San Mateo, 41 booster pumps, and quite a bit of storage capacity. We have the hydrants, you have an excellent PPC rating here, which I'm sure you're aware of, you have a two classification, which is among the highest in the nation. What people, a lot of people don't understand is that 40% of your ISO score is actually comprised of the quality of the water system.
Can you define terms?
Sure.
ISO and public protection.
Yes. So the Insurance Services Office is an international, is a national organization that helps in some ways to set insurance rates. One of the ways they do that is to grade the fire protection for various communities in what's called a public protection classification. And so that PPC classification ranges, you know, from about one to four, so two is among the very highest in the nation. I think there's only about 238 or 250 communities that have a classification of two. And when they set that score, that score is set, about 40% of it is the actual fire department itself, its operations, training, equipment, et cetera. About 40% of the score is the integrity and quality of the water system, and about 10% is the emergency classification or communications system. And those different factors are then weighed into a score, and then insurers can use that score when setting insurance rates for property owners. So to give you an idea, one city that we serve, I don't know here, but this is another city that has a three, much smaller community, they were estimating that their ISO score, their PPC classification saves their citizens somewhere roughly around $7 million a year in insurance costs. So bigger city with a higher classification, I don't know what it would be here, but it might be more than that, I don't know. But just to give you an idea of the importance or one of the aspects of the quality of the water system that people don't always think about. Our water here meets all primary and secondary, state and federal standards, as I mentioned. And when you take down a break, and when you break down a typical customer bill here in San Mateo, it equals out to just about, a little bit more than one cent per gallon delivered into your home. So when you think about that, you know, a gallon of milk might cost you 402, gallon of gas, 365, give or take, maybe, a gallon of café lattes, maybe 25 or 30 bucks. But this is a good drinking water that is then delivered safely into your home. This is not necessarily a reflection of us, but to drive home the point that not all water systems and all water providers are created equal. So the US EPA is estimated that, and some people would say this is a conservative estimate, that $660 billion is needed nationwide to fix the national drinking water infrastructure. The Society of Civil Engineers has not given the nationwide infrastructure a very good grade. I'd like to point out that they don't regionalize that score or score individual drinking water providers, and we consider ourselves much better than the typical water provider. And some people have estimated that as many as one in four Americans is receiving drinking water that does not meet standards. So to give you an idea of what we do in order to protect our customers and ensure the safety and reliability of water systems that we have, we invest in the infrastructure. In the past cycle, we invested 628 million, a little bit more than statewide, in our infrastructure over the past three years, that's more than any other water company in the state. Let me catch up on my notes here. So we've seen the, you know, the health and safety risks that occur when infrastructure investment goes ignored, and maintaining and improving the quality and the safety and reliability of our infrastructure for everyday water needs as well as for emergency uses and for firefighters in the case of an emergency is of the utmost importance. Here locally, in our Bay Shore District, of which San Mateo is part, we invested more than 74 million here in the past three years, much of it here in San Mateo. That included here in San Mateo during this previous cycle that's coming to a close, about five miles of main replaced. And we're proposing to invest an additional 49 million in this next cycle as part of our proposal, and that 49 million is here specific to San Mateo. That's not the district figure, that's here for the city of San Mateo. What we'd like to do with that, and again, these are the proposed projects that we've put forth, is about almost 11 miles of water main to be replaced, a pump station rebuild, storage tank replacement, valve maintenance and replacement. These are, this is not an exhaustive list, this is just to highlight some of the key projects that are part of that $49 million proposal. So what this entails is a filing with the California Public Utilities Commission. We present what we would refer to as our infrastructure improvement plan, and as submitted, as I mentioned, what we've submitted, that does come with an effect on customer bills. As proposed, right now, the customers here locally would see about a 10 cent per day increase beginning in 2020. That's if it were granted as we had proposed. But we do not set the rates. The rates are set by the independent California Public Utilities Commission, and that happens every three years. It's an ongoing cycle to make sure that water service costs reflect the true and current costs of delivering that water service. In addition to the commission itself, there is an independent watchdog agency, the California Public Advocates Office, used to be referred to as the Office of Ratepayer Advocates, it's changed its name in the past two years. And what they do is they vet our proposal, challenge it, and present their side of what they think should happen to the commission for the commission to make a final determination. So one of the things I'd like to highlight is that Cal PA's legislative mission is to, quote, "Obtain the lowest possible rate for service consistent with reliable and safe service levels." And I think it's important to note that that's Cal Water's goal, too. So we might come at this from different angles, but everybody really at the end of this process, whether it's Cal PA, or the commission, or the customers, we all want the same thing. All the parties are in this, not to haggle or to bargain back and forth as much as to work through the process to make sure that the capital projects that are absolutely necessary for the safety and reliability of the water system are what come out in the end and are reflected in the customer bills. So all the parties here are working towards the same goal, and that is to balance the need to maintain and improve our drinking water infrastructure, but also to try and preserve affordability for our customers. And that is a fairly brief summation of where we are. We filed in July of 2018, we are, California Public Advocates Office has released their report and their take on our filing, and that is available at the California Public Advocates website. And then the next stage will be to go through negotiations with Cal PA and then start hearings in June with the administrative law judges who then make a proposed decision to the commissioners. At that point, the commissioners can either accept the administrative law judge's recommendation, or a commissioner could make an alternative recommendation as far as what our capital projects are and how the rates get set around that, with the idea that the proceedings would be wrapped up by the end of this calendar year for new possible rates to go into effect in January of 2020. So we were also asked to bring some information about water conservation here in San Mateo and the Bay Shore and mid peninsula area. So this is just to give you an idea, and this is, we encourage all customers to take advantage of this because it's part of what you're paying for in your water service. So we have a lot of rebate programs to encourage people to conserve water. And this is a look at some of the various things that people can access. It includes the website where people can look that up. There is also lists of the appropriate products that qualify for the rebates, and we encourage customers to check those before they make the purchase, and then they can always submit that for the rebate program. They can also sign up for a conservation kit, which includes various items that they can use in their households, bathroom fixture replacements, and then some new programs that will be coming soon have not, they're still in development here for the San Mateo region. Water use evaluations is an interesting one. Customers can ask us to send an expert to their home to evaluate their water use and make recommendations about what potential items or behaviors they can change to drive down their bill. The same is available in a distinct set for commercial customers, and this again is just a look at what those rebates are here for this specific district, what is available for our commercial business customers. And a little bit more in addition to, again, another component there with the installation of smart irrigation controllers coming soon. This is a look at, and I think he can read it well, this is, this is a look at what the gallons per capita per day usage is here in the mid peninsula section of Bay Shore that includes San Mateo. So you can see where we were in 2009, that is a per capita daily usage, and where we are in 2018, you can see that there's been a significant reduction there, down to 91 gallons per day. This is a summation of some of the prohibited uses of water, and this is one of the mechanisms that is used in order to encourage conservation so that people are not using water in an inefficient or wasteful manner, use of a hose without a shut-off nozzle, things of that extent that can greatly impact water use. So here in the mid peninsula section of Bay Shore, including San Mateo, this is a look at what's happened since 20, just since 2018, the conservation programs that have already been implemented and put in place will save 21 millions of gallons, gallons of water over their lifetime. And if you look at cumulative savings going back to conservation programs implemented since 2011, they're in the process of saving 1.5 billion gallons that's here locally of water over the course of their lifetime. This breaks down some of those conservation programs by category, how much water savings are realized in the various categories, plumbing fixture replacements, irrigation equipment, residential customer assistance, and non-residential, which is commercial assistance. This goes to the issue of resource planning and conservation planning over the long term. So we have a integrated planning process that is prescribed by law. Every five years, we have to update our urban water management plan. So that plan was last updated in 2015, and that update was accepted and published on 2016. So we're going to be going back into that cycle. That again is a public and transparent process. That draft will have to be, will be published on our website for input. A hard copy will be available in the local office for people to come and look at, and we'll have to conduct a public meeting where people can come and make comment on the urban water management plan before we finalize and submit it for acceptance. In addition, we're also coming up to the new cycle on our conservation master plan. That goes part and parcel, and it's much more specific instead of on the resources plan side, this integrates with that on the conservation and the user end and consumption side. The other document there is to illustrate what we also have to have in place, which is our drought contingency plan. That's what we refer to as our Rule 14 and our Schedule 14.1, and that is our drought contingency plan, which also under new state laws is being, is being updated as part of a multi-packet of recently passed bills that are sometimes referred to as the conservation as a way of life framework, and some of these planning requirements are going through some tweaks as a result of those new, that new legislation. That is kind of an overview. I tried to go quickly, but I figured you would have some questions, and I would save as much time as possible to field those questions. Like I said, we have plenty of experts in the, in attendance to answer anything that's over my head.
Thank you very much. Thank you, that was excellent. We, I'm curious, Cookie, do we have any public comment slips?
No, I don't have.
On the subject matter? I see one that might come down in a moment. Okay, just wanted to kind of get a sense of timing. I think we should have the commission ask questions, then we'll let any public come up and do the same, and then comments, closing it. Rafael, questions?
Thank you for that, for that report. I want to also thank Ross and Kyle for the time they spent with me yesterday. They reached out following some questions that I sent to staff. I do have a number of questions, several of which I raised in that conversation that I was hoping would be included here, but we're not. I'd like to understand the Cal Water strategy with regards to climate change in specific terms, what is being done to improve not just consumer-side efficiency but overall system And I'd like to understand what the overall system leak rate is, and that's something that I'd previously raised last time Cal Water was here, and unfortunately I've not received a response to, and so I'd like to hear about that.
So in the first regard, with regard to climate change and resource planning, I'm going to answer some of that, and then if there's anything that I miss, you know, Scott might be able to address some of it, but. So although it's not specifically required, are, there is discussion of climate change in the past two urban water management plans, that's in 2010 and 2015, and you can find that in those documents, and we can certainly send those, versions of those documents to you with those sections bookmarked if that would be of help to you.
Well, I did receive some, some material from Ross on that, but it's, it's pretty high level.
Okay. Well, if you check Section 3.3.1 of 2015, talks about maximum minimum temperature increases respectively over the, since 1985, potential effects of that, and then more recently, maximum and minimum temperatures increasing at a rate of 1.46 Fahrenheit and 3.76 Fahrenheit per hundred years. And we get that information that we're taking from, some of it from San Francisco PUC strategy documents, and we're also in the midst of adjusting some of that climate change information in the next planning cycle, as directed from, not only from the new pending, or recently passed legislation, but also just as a way to find, to look for better models, more current models that might be available.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, let me be more specific. The question is, how is that informing your specific capital plans and efficiency targets?
I don't know that I have an answer that is that specific. The studies at the time relied on the best available projections based on source management and what and what we're trying to do at this point is integrate potential future climate change impacts into our ongoing supply planning. But I, I don't have any information that's more specific than that. I don't know if there's anything there that Scott can or would like to address.
Good evening. My name is Scott Wagner. What I wanted to touch on was just that as, as we look at the impacts of climate change, we're most focused on the impact on our supply, the water supply that we can then serve to the customers. And what we are trying to understand is the impact to that supply specifically, where it may be reduced. Are we going to see snowpack change because of climate change that then will impact some of the groundwater recharge that we see in certain districts? Specific to this region, we purchase the water from the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, who largely brings their water in from Hachachee, from the Twalomee River. And so what we are really watching is how are they impacted by the impacts of climate change, in the change in runoff, in the change in flow through the delta, through the different systems? And what we're then comparing and looking at is how is that going to affect the demand levels? You know, tied to the drought and the reduction in demand, what capacity of water do we have? Do we anticipate from the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission? And then where do we stand? And then what do we need to do to try and change that? We have seen a reduction in demand levels because of the drought. We're seeing a bit of a rebound that way, but we, we are seeing a reduction in demand. And so that is where we then evaluate to say, do we need to pursue additional supplies through the SFPUC? Or do we need to pursue other sources of supply that could be used to supplement the water sources that we have, whether it be recycled water sources or other pieces? And so that's how it is all combining into the planning efforts as we recommend projects for the rate case to pursue additional supply or to just make sure that we understand the impacts on supply.
Okay. Thank you for that. You know, I appreciate certainly that we want to get a more detailed understanding on what the supply picture looks like, but I'll have to be candid because these were the exact same questions that I had three years ago, and it's frankly quite disappointing that there's not a more clear, aggressive attention here into the capital plan itself as well, which might have implications from the standpoint of water efficiency. And if we don't, if we don't have, you know, off the top of our, you know, on hand, easily on hand, what our leak rate is in the system overall, you know, that, that to me is a big red flag if we, if we don't know that and we're not aggressively addressing the need for improved overall system efficiency and looking at the capital plan, not just from the standpoint of system efficiency, but water quality impacts that may come from having to go after other sources. And, you know, maybe the information is there, but again, as I mentioned, these were the exact same questions that I raised three years ago and in the meeting with Dan and Kyle just yesterday. So, so I'm quite disappointed in that, to be perfectly honest. The second set of questions I have with regards to the, you know, proposed rate increase that Cal Water is pursuing, you know, is I just, you know, pulled up Cal Water's financials, and it looks like, if I'm reading it properly, you know, Cal Water had net income of $45 million in, in 2016, which is fine, you know, it's an investor owned utility and, and there's, you know, reasonable rate of return here that, that I'm sure is factored in here. But what we're not seeing in, in the information that's being presented is what's the historical rate increases, how much of the infrastructure need has been addressed historically, and where we're headed? So three years from now, are we going to come back here and have double the rate increase being proposed, half the rate increase being, you know, that, that we're seeing this year? So we're frankly just not getting a lot of information, not a lot of contextual information about how this rate increase relates to what the overall history and what the overall, overall need is. So again, I'm quite disappointed that there isn't more specific information there. Those are my two major concerns. You know, there are other questions that I, that I floated to the team yesterday with regards to efficiency and reaching multi-unit dwellings, you know, water quality, large customers, and how we're addressing the need to be more aggressive perhaps than what the legal target is on, on efficiency. So, you know, I welcome additional comments on that as well.
Is there, I'd like to see a little more transparency. So you, you asked some questions and presumably got some answers, but it's offline. Is there any way that can be summarized either now or perhaps later in a memo that can go to all the commissioners and then be part of the public record?
We'd be happy to do that, and not only to summarize the meeting from yesterday, but also to circle back on the questions that we were not able to generate, new content for the presentation between then and now.
I assume that'd be helpful for you, and I think it'd be helpful for the commission generally, as our, our responsibility in this case is largely to be a public forum. So I'd like to get that out into the public. Okay. Thank you. Susan?
I got a sense the tone throughout the presentation is affordability and trying to keep prices as low as possible. I'm a little concerned about that, and I say that while I appreciate that, and I'm sure the residents appreciate that. The aspect of climate change is going to require what I believe some major investments. And going back to what Commissioner Reyes said in terms of, of, of being able in terms of efficiency, particularly within your operations, and the ability to, to identify leakage is crucial. Actually, there's sensors that are available to identify leakage, and cities throughout the United States use them. So I'm just going to kind of make that overarching comment. I'm, you know, obviously, nobody wants high rates. I get it. But my concern is, is you're, you're, you're doing upgrades that need to be done and kind of keep the status quo. But climate change, I think most, or some people, most people would believe is happening faster and it's going to be more intense than what we've anticipated. And I just don't see Cal Water ready for it personally. I think your conservation efforts that you outlined, high efficiency toilets, irrigation and sprinkle nozzles and the water kit, we actually got one of the water kits, you know, frankly, it's just not enough. And it's kind of 1990s stuff, really. I'm kind of waiting for smart meters. Maybe somebody should go on PG&E's website. They're doing pretty good in terms of how they inform residents. So I'll just kind of make a comment on that as well. When are we going to get smart meters, for those that want it?
I'll let Ross address that.
Thank you. I'm Ross Moylan. I'm the district manager here in Bay Shore. I'd like to address a couple of things, if I can, that, that were brought up along with the smart meter commissioner. So first on, on transparency, that's something that I pride myself, and I'm happy that I work for Cal Water, because we definitely want to be transparent. So if there's some things that we need to talk about, let's talk about them, let's get them out there. We can follow up with reports, we can share that with the commission, share it with the public. If, if we're missing the audience, we need to, we need to get there. With regards to water loss, I did follow up. I'm sorry I didn't come out in the presentation, Commissioner Reyes, but let me read to you from, from the experts that I talked to. So with water loss and auditing program, we submitted what's referred to as a level one validated water loss audit for calendar year 2017 to the Department of Water Resources, and that was done in September of that year. The audit included real loss of 16.6 gallons per connection per day, which is 38% lower than the statewide median of 26.69 gallons per connection per day. We are also currently completing a component analysis of water loss, which will be used to guide our upcoming leak detection pilot. We talked about that a little bit yesterday, Commissioner Reyes. And what I found out is we're already in the pilot phase. Unfortunately, it's not here in the Bay Shore area, but we're going to be using that data to sort of really determine what makes the best sense, where to put the money, the resources, the technology, and make sure that we're not just trying something that maybe is going to give us problems or fail, and we're going to be constantly doing maintenance. So that's why we're doing a pilot. We often do that. Smart meters is also an example of a pilot program. We are working with the California Public Utilities Commission with regards to introducing AMI, or automated meter, infrastructure in our systems, smart meters also known as. The pilot has started in Southern California. We're doing a little bit in the area here. In fact, we're working most recently with Genentech on installing some AMI meters to kind of pilot. Again, we need to show the results, we need to show the benefits, we need to show the efficiencies, we need to show the ability for customers conserve, because they actually know what their use is in real time, instead of waiting for a bill every 30 days to come to their door and possibly surprise them that they might have had some sort of a leak or they have something that needs to be taken care of. So we're, we're excited about it, we're pushing for it. It's going to be a little bit of time. I think this pilot is going to really help open that door, and hopefully we're going to start installing that in a lot larger scale than we currently are. I personally can speak to the benefits of, of having that infrastructure. I have it at my home, and I am enjoying the, the ability to sort of monitor our usage. I get the alerts when we, I'll say it's laundry day, and I get the alert the next day saying your usage spiked higher than what you've been typically doing. So huge advantage there, as well as when you're not home and you see usage, you can, you kind of get alerted, maybe have your neighbor go check and make sure something else is not going on at the home that you're unaware of. With the multi-residential outreach that we spoke about yesterday, Commissioner Reyes, we have conservation information specifically for residents of multifamily properties. That is a challenge to get there, as you mentioned. Imagine living in a big complex that has one master meter that sort of serves everybody in the complex. And let's say there's 100 units, 10 of them are doing a really good job, they really care about water usage, but the other 90, maybe not so much. How do you reach those other 90? So that's something we're, we're challenged with, we're reaching out, folks like Kyle Ramey, who's here tonight, that's kind of his main role is to get out and reach them. Due to the complicated nature of communicating directly to these residents, we placed a focus on device-driven programs for the multifamily properties. Specifically, we're offering bathroom fixture replacement programs for them, which include installation of high efficiency toilets, showerheads, bathroom aerators at no charge. And we're also planning to offer direct installation of weather-based irrigation controllers for these properties this year. So that's something that's in the works right now. Another comment that was brought up, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, was by Commissioner Reyes yesterday and tonight, is the transparency of where rates are, right? So we have the current three-year filing that we're in the midst of, and as was mentioned, we're kind of in the rebuttal kind of process with that and settling. One of the main drivers in this rate increase that we're talking about is infrastructure, right? Which is kind of fitting that we're here tonight talking to you. Our main replacement program is a huge component of that. We, it's recommended for water utilities in, you know, United States to be close to what's called a 100-year main replacement program. We have been writing for many years prior to our last ramp up around 150 to 200 years. So with this rate filing, we're much closer to the 1% or the 100-year replacement program. Our anticipation is that's going to continue. That's going to continue beyond this rate case cycle or infrastructure improvement plan, and we'll continue to, to keep on track with that program. There's some other things that are important to realize with that, that, that some could state from different opinions. One is you should do more now, don't wait. One is that's maybe too aggressive. That's the balancing that we have to take into consideration with our, with, with our customers, what's affordable, what's reasonable, along with the other programs and initiatives that we're, we're challenged in making sure get done and are prioritized correctly. But main replacement program is, is very significant. I think most here probably remember a large main break we had in our community. I remember very clearly, it was on February 8th of 2018, on El Camino near Notre Dame by St. Matthew's Church and School. Very significant example of what failure of underground pipeline distribution systems can have on our community from a property standard, property damage standpoint, water quality concerns, environmental impacts, where that water is going to be going, along with just kind of the concern and fear, right? And, and we don't operate in that kind of magnitude, it's not to create panic, but there is risk to all of us in making sure that that infrastructure is taken care of. We have a program that we're very proud of. There's a lot of criteria that goes into identifying which water mains are going to be replaced, what cycle they should be on and timeline, and, and, and that's including now our larger transmission mains as well. So again, it's pretty aggressive compared to where we were at before, but it really needs to be. We also have to be careful we're not tearing up everybody's neighborhood all the time, right? So we're coordinating with our communities, our city leaders with regards to street moratoriums, other work that's happening in the area as well. So there is a coordinated effort. It isn't just a Cal Water decision on where that activity is going to take place.
And that's great in terms of coordination, I just don't see enough action. You know, if we look at where things are going in this state, it's not only climate change, but our population is forecasted to grow to over 50 million people, and that's really key. And, and like I said, frankly, the residential and commercial conservation efforts that are offered, like I said, are 1990s to me. And I think Cal Water needs to do more and has to be more aggressive. And I hear what you're saying in terms of a balancing act, but I personally think that Cal Water is so far behind, I have to be honest with you, the eight ball on this, in terms of, of, of capital improvements. Like, let's go back to the multifamily complex, let's say there's 90 units, there's one meter, and it's very hard to determine who's using what. And you had mentioned some of the tools that are available for efficiency. Nice, but what would be ideal is each unit, each 90, each of those units, there's 90 units, each has a meter. Who would put that meter in? Is that Cal Water?
It can be us that would do that, yes.
Yeah. You see, to me, that is something that's far more aggressive than offering tools to possibly reduce your water. Far more aggressive. So this is the example of putting sensors. You mentioned, basically, Cal Water is 16.6 gallons per day per connection. How many connections do we have here in the state?
I don't know about the state, and I know here in the Bay Shore District, we have 53,000.
53,000, okay. So 53,000 times, we'll say 17 gallons per day. That's a lot of water. That's a lot of water.
It is.
And you mentioned that the average is 26.6 gallons per day per connection. Well, to me, that is, that is so far off the charts in terms of, it's not even acceptable. It's not even a metric, it's not even a metric that I would use to measure myself to.
That was the statewide number you were referring to.
Yeah, yeah, that's the statewide, yeah. And so I think, I think you, there's another you could do is, is we've got 53,000 connections in Bay Shore, we're losing roughly 17 gallons per day per, per 53,000. That's a lot of water. I would, I would figure out how to take care of that.
We, I promise you, we're not satisfied with that number.
Yeah. So maybe we'll come back and, and we can get an update on this. Let me just continue with a few other questions. There was a slide here on prohibited uses of water. How is that enforced?
I'm going to invite Kyle Ramey up here from the Conservation Department.
Thank you. Hi, Kyle Ramey. I'm the Conservation Coordinator for the Northern Districts in, in Cal Water. Currently, the prohibited uses of water is not enforced by state law. If people, people can, we, we generally use people who observe other people wasting water, and then we follow up either with a letter, a door hanger, or we give them a call and remind them of the prohibited uses of water. But we are not mandated by, by the state to, to enforce those, not driving the streets looking for water waste.
So do you have to be manned by, mandated by the state to take more aggressive action?
Yes, we don't have that authority.
You don't have that authority? All right. So according to state law, that's about the best you can do? Okay.
Yeah, we. We're in a state of emergency when the State Water Resources Control Board accepted our drought contingency plan, our Schedule 14, then we are able to add some monetary penalties, but that is a specific circumstance under which we have that type of authority.
Sure. All right. Can I have some questions on pumps? How many pumps here in our district?
That would be an operations.
Yeah. Big picture, your capital in the district here is pumps and pipes primarily.
Yes, and water storage.
And water storage.
Forty-one booster pumps.
Forty-one booster pumps.
So, we have 41 booster pumps. Is there any concern on leakage on booster pumps?
It is factored into the overall system-wide.
It is, but I would say from a technology standpoint, we do have a better eye with regards to something that we refer to as SCADA, which stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, which is basically electronic monitoring device at our pump station facilities. It can be used to monitor tank levels, pumps turning on and off. It could be water quality. It could be security. There's a variety of different things that we can use that for, including, I would say, pressure loss when pumps would be kicking on and off when they shouldn't be. So, we can go out, we get alarms, we receive those, and we can respond 24 hours a day.
So, do pumps have what I'm going to just call chronic leakage, where some of the sensors may or may not pick that up?
We visit our sites daily. We're not okay with leaks. If we see a leak, it's going to get fixed.
On a pump, all right, right.
Yes. It could cause other problems, too.
On the pipes, then our leakage is the connectors, most likely.
It could be, yeah. That would be kind of your weakest point, so to speak, yes.
Okay. One last question here. I want to talk a little bit about reuse, particularly, like I said, within the climate and the population increase. What, you had mentioned that Cal Water is working with Daly City on some reuse plans. Can you share some of that with the commission and our audience?
Yeah, it's probably, it's probably a good example of the things that we mentioned that we're doing more of or in planning phases with various communities throughout the state, not just here in this region. Actually, I have a meeting next week in Daly City with regards to a reuse project. And basically, what you're doing is you're taking the tituary, the highly-treated effluent from a wastewater treatment plant, and you're reusing that water for other uses, such as landscaping, right? So, one example in that area is the town of Coma, where you have a lot of cemeteries, right, which use water for the cemeteries, the landscaping, the green. With a program like a reuse project, it's possible for switching off of your normal, we'll say, domestic supply or even groundwater supply to that reuse water. So, that's the kind of program example that we're working on. That's an example of a project that's much further along than some of the other ones that we're working on here in the area. But that is something that I think everybody's going to be hearing more about, and hopefully we'll be able to do more of that in maybe even our area here.
What about reuse on potable water? Any plans on that?
You mean like gray water systems and things?
Well, that is reusing water for drinking purposes. Any water. I would imagine there's probably grades of water.
Kyle, do you have example of anything specific with that? I know something that we've looked at here in the San Mateo area, something we refer to as scalping water. We talked briefly about it before the meeting tonight. But as far as, I'll call it a gray water kind of reuse, individual residential, I don't think we have anything significant that I'm aware of with programs like that right now.
Right. See, this would be another example, if I was to look at climate change and an increase in the population, where capital and efficiency improvements really need to be made, be it in the leakage of the pipes, the metering, the appropriate meters, that is beginning the exploration of, you know, look, when our wastewater treatment plan is done in roughly 10 years, it will be dumping, as we talked about, Ross, tens of millions of gallons of the cleanest water in the state of California back into the bay. And that's a shame. That water is drinkable, by the way. That water is drinkable. And it's a shame not to capture that and send it back into some sort of storage, be it the reservoir or one of your tanks. So, okay.
We're very interested in that, for sure, so.
Thank you. I've got questions in a little different area. I mean, one of the justifications for recognizing that we're not the CPUC here, but one of the justifications for the pricing of these infrastructure improvements, and I'd like to hear a little bit about what's behind the monitoring, the SCADA, the SCADA. What are we talking about there, as well as the security enhancements that were noted?
Well, part of the SCADA, everyone's okay with that acronym? I'll continue to use that. It's a little bit easier to say, right? But the upgrade there is basically just an upgrade. The existing system we have is really outdated. There are features with the upgrade that we don't currently have. I mentioned the ability to capture advancements such as security detection, things of that nature. Also, really reducing what I'll call false alarms, maybe alerts that maybe are not necessarily real, that we need to respond to. So, there's definitely some efficiency gains there. And just really the overall monitoring and accuracy of the system. So, that's an upgrade of a system that's going to be consistent throughout all of our districts, not just the Bay Shore District. And there's other benefits of having one consistent program as well. Scott's probably more familiar with any other details on that, but...
Are we talking about enterprise software? What are we dealing with here when you talk about SCADA?
It's software and hardware, both.
And hardware, okay. And it's something that you're doing throughout the state or throughout your different, your service areas?
Yes, we are. That's correct.
It's just time for an upgrade on that system statewide. It's the remote monitoring system for our infrastructure.
And we've really waited to do it on a global scale like we are because we wanted to make sure the next system we went to was robust and reliable, cost-effective, and also we had a good justification for it. So, it took some time to get here. We're really excited about it. I think I speak for most districts, if not all, at Cal Water. We have been waiting for this. This is very important to operating our systems.
Well, and your last bullet point on the summary is tied to that. It's security enhancements without any descriptor to protect the system infrastructure. What are we talking about there? If you could elaborate a little bit, please.
Without getting into great detail on vulnerability, that is a concern for a water utility, right? We drink this water, right? And we need to make sure that it's secure, it's safe, that the bad element cannot impact us, and that we have deterrent, and that we have alerts in place. So, it really ties to those type of enhancements. We did have a breach in one of our systems not too long ago, about two years ago. That was pretty significant. Thankfully, the water system was not impacted, but we didn't know. We needed to really make sure. We had to take a lot of sampling, and we've installed additional security since then. So, that's the type of example. It's unfortunate that that's something that we need to be concerned with, but we do not take it lightly.
So, we're talking protection from human intervention?
Yeah, absolutely.
It comes on, there are recommendations that water utilities receive from the Department of Homeland Security for hardening the infrastructure and securing it. And it's a phased-in approach in order to make these systems more secure.
Okay. And then, in your application, I will trouble finding this. I understand the pricing. Is, are the tiers themselves under consideration up at the CPUC? Either the, you know, the triggers, when you go from one tier to the next, or the values, you know, the differential pricing, other than just the dollar amounts?
We, there are kind of two components that the commissioners are weighing in on. One is, these are the projects that we believe are necessary and the business expenses that we believe are necessary. And the other is the actual rate setting of how that revenue gets collected to pay for those expenses. And so, they have to approve the expenses, and they also have to approve the rate setting, including the various tiers of how that expenses recoup.
Okay. But is there any thought, recognizing, again, we're not the CPUC up here, but we are looking out for our constituents, citizens of San Mateo, in terms of adjusting the tiers so that, basically, you end up with an incentive structure, where those people who are using more water above a norm would be, you know, are paying, you know, it's a burden benefit, basically. And so, it's an incentive to keep to not waste, but it also doesn't penalize sort of the average consumer's normal usage. It sort of penalizes abnormal or wasteful usage.
That is the intent.
That's the design.
Of the rate tiers is to, the increased cost for the higher-tier users has to have a direct reflect on the increased cost of serving those higher-tier users. So, there has to be that component. But it also includes a component, which is to provide a financial incentive to use less water.
Gotcha. Good. And I appreciate that description. And my question is whether the trigger points, the levels, is that something that's being reviewed in this process right now with an eye towards, just looking out for our district. It made different districts, you know, our average acreage is not half or one acre, so we're not going to have so much, you know, water usage at that level. You know, are we appropriately reflecting, you know, what's the normal usage here and applying the penalty, if you will, at the right level, but not overly penalizing the average user? Am I being too local, maybe? I don't know.
Well, you know, I think that, I think that's a question that's open for interpretation by the commission. We believe that we have proposed something that is appropriate, that is not unnecessarily punitive to the typical user, and does encourage people who are on the higher end of the use scale to move down, and provides a financial incentive. We believe that what we have presented is that correct mechanism for that, but that determination is ultimately out of our hands.
So, it's at least theoretically still in play?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, I appreciate that. Do we have anything from the public?
No, I don't.
Don't walk away, Drew. We'll dock your three minutes if you do that again.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners and staff in Cal Water. This, I actually saw part of this presentation at the San Carlos CPUC meeting, so I appreciate it back then, and I appreciate the additional information here. I learned some stuff. So, thank you for that. So, I would love to like, just as a user, know if there's a way to figure out if my meter's wasting 16 gallons, so to speak. When I look in, it's dry. If there's some little simple things like that, smart meter would be cool. You know, I appreciate a little bit the conversation on the big picture, about 1% per year, because that's what I was wondering, like, kind of roughly, what's the replacement rate? The comment about, like, just more support for conservation, anticipating, taking advantage of the current programs, some of them. But the gray water idea, that actually struck home because that's something I'm going to be working on. And if there was some technical support that Cal Water provided or could just help, like, I can think of a variety of things that would help facilitate me implementing a gray water system at my location. And then, kind of the big picture thing, climate change was getting brought about in a couple other different meetings, was I could see Cal Water working to partner with the city on the reclaiming the water from the sewer plant, specifically something simple in the sense that the city could be allowed to, through some agreement, to reuse that water at the golf course. Some city-owned lands in Cal Water wouldn't file a lawsuit that you're not allowed to reuse the water. And like, that could be partnered, partnership done without legal complications and threats to sue and stuff. Just something simple that, as a first step, that, and then maybe there's a few things where the pipes are going and stuff. But I think that's something that might be possible. I don't know. I don't know all the legal stuff. And then, the other thing that, this is kind of a tangent, but it is related since you're here and just discussion, is, you know, I would love to see some visibility to the data that Cal Water provides to the city for our sewer rates and stuff. I've heard about it. I've had discussions about it, but it'd be great to be on our bill, or we can go and go, yep, here's your usage those months. This is what we submitted for your property for the sewer bill. Because the Cal Water is driving the sewer bills, at least for individual residents. I'm not sure for multifamily how some of that billing works. And it'd just be great visibility to say, like, hey, your usage in October through April impacts your sewer rates. That's part of the calculation, and here's the data. Yep, I'm just checking my list here. And thank you very much. Did appreciate this presentation. Thanks, Campbell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. I'm going to bring it back to the commission for any follow-up questions or further comments.
So, I just want to make sure that I'm getting my math here correct. So, if I recall, then from the loss audit of 2017, it was 16.6 gallons per connection per day, and San Mateo has 25,000 service connections. So, that's in San Mateo, then a loss of about 415,000 gallons per day. How many total gallons per day do we have in use?
Total production?
Yep.
Ross has that figure.
My quick math of 91 gallons per connection per day seems to come up with 9.6 million. Is that right?
So, according to my data that I have here with me tonight, and if it's not correct, I will follow up with you. Average daily demand per capita here in San Mateo is 87 gallons.
Per capita. So, that's, we have 106,000. So, we're talking somewhere around, what's that, around 8 million?
Yes, and per day, 361 gallons. That's per service, sorry, per service, 361 gallons.
So, in an apples-to-apples comparison, the water loss is more appropriately compared to that per-service number, because it's, the water loss is calculated per service as opposed to per person.
Right. So, I just want to get a sense of what that is. So, that's about 4.6% loss. Does that sound right?
I haven't run that number.
I would have to run it, too. I...
Okay. So, which actually compares relatively favorably based on some state numbers that I just took a look at. But I think we really need, that number needs to be front and center at all times, as well as our efficiency targets. That really needs to be kept a close eye on, and we really need to be driving efficiency across the entire system, not just the consumer side. I'd like to get some direction from, or input from staff. Will Cal Water be going on to a council presentation following this? And secondly, can we make recommendations to council on this topic?
So, they will be going before council with an informational report on the six. So, because this is an informational report and not an action item, there are no recommendations that can be made to council.
But we can provide, this discussion will be encapsulated for council in some form in the staff report?
It was not going to be. This was just sort of a, an opportunity to give additional public comment and input and a more in-depth discussion. The council discussion will be considerably shorter.
Okay. Because if there's not an opportunity for the commission to provide some input to the council, then I would ask that this be agendized at a future meeting so that we can have some discussion with regards to recommendations to the council. Now, this goes to, in terms of the PUC process, this is a time-limited opportunity with regards to comments that the city might make, right? So, what's the time window for that?
We're actually at the end of the commenting period. So, if you wanted to provide comment, the end of May is the time limit, but I would recommend that you try and get it in by mid-May.
Right. So, right, so that's a little bit of a problematic dynamic, right? So, here we have an update around which we can't actually take a formal action, and yet the window for taking an action is, you know, basically mid-May. So...
If I may, you know, I would recommend to council, but I don't think they will, watch the tape of this, the video of this presentation. But more brass tacks, if there's any, I don't think we're going to have a debate and come up with... up with a consensus of hot-button issues, but if there's anything that an individual commissioner would like to summarize and submit, you're free to do so to the council and as long as you, the council will look at, that'll go in the administrative report. And it can be from, you know, your title is, it won't be the commission's recommendation, but it'll be a commissioner.
Sure.
That's valuable.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it's not unreasonable to consider that the staff report include, you know, some discussion of what the discussion has been here. Where I'm headed is, is that I think, you know, and other commissioners can comment, that, you know, some comment from the city to the PUC with regards to looking for, for the PUC to be more aggressive or work with Cal Water to be more aggressive with regards to climate change. And that includes, you know, advancing AMI, addressing system leaks more aggressively, looking at water quality, more aggressive efficiency targets are all things that are actually very much in the interest of the community here in San Mateo and throughout the region. And, you know, I would think it appropriate for the staff report to reflect those concerns of the, of the commission if other commissioners agree.
And I can sort of, if there's a consensus on comments, I probably at this point still can edit the staff report going to council to add a summary of the discussion.
Susan, comments?
In terms of what Rapiola is bringing up or is my overall comments?
Your overall comments? Both? You're welcome to.
One, I do think Commissioner Reyes is bringing up a good point, so I would support that. I'm just gonna, look, I've said everything I've, I needed to say about Cal Water, but I want to just point this out. You know, the leakage aspect, and once again, it's, it's a, it's a real issue and it's something that we can all understand. But if you look at 16.6 gallons per day, what is it, 25,000 connections in the city of San Mateo? That's roughly about 415,000 gallons of water. 415,000 gallons of water a day loss. Loss. Now, and what's happening is that loss is negating your, the conservation efforts. You have said that 21 million gallons was saved between 20, starting in 2014, I'm assuming until the end of 2018, that four-year period. Well, that 21 million gallons between that four-year period is 14,383 gallons per day. But yet we are losing 415,000 gallons a day. So it's just blown off our conservation efforts to zero. So seriously, I think Commissioner Reyes brings up a really good point that you folks have to work with Cal Water and you have to get more aggressive. And it's probably going to mean higher rates and nobody's going to like it. But, but we're losing too much water and we've got climate change coming up and we've got the population of the city that's going to go, that is going to go up another 20%. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Cal Water and staff. My suggestion, because I, with time being what it is, is not that we spend any time trying to come up to consensus of what are, what I'll call the hot-button issues, but I think there are probably, staff can tell me if I'm wrong, probably a few that you can summarize. And of course, the recording secretary is doing a great job of, of taking notes that you can perhaps then add to the administrative report without us debating what's, there are only three of us up here tonight, so.
So, I mean, the three top items that I have are more aggressive water conservation policies, system leakage and climate adaptation preparation. Is that, I can provide obviously more detail in the report, but does that broadly summarize the three primary areas?
That sounds correct to me.
Yeah, we probably should include AMI, advanced metering, as one of the measures that we should be looking at.
Say that in AMI.
So I'm sorry, Kathy, can you please repeat those?
All right, so water conservation, system leakage, climate adaptation preparation and AMI.
And I would say climate adaptation and increase in population. It's, you know, it's, it's a double, both of them exacerbate the supply and usage of water. So I would put the population aspect in there.
Okay. I think we need to move on. We've got a full plate. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much.
We do appreciate all your work.
Very much.
I encourage you all to stay around for the rest, but I don't expect it.
The, we are hosting the North Central Neighborhood Cleanup Day at our location, so please come and visit us April 13th.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Just a note on the agenda, item, that's item three we've just done. Item five, reach codes. Commissioner Reyes is going to recuse himself from that item, so I'm going to push that to the, to the end and move item six, the Climate Action Plan, up. So, so he can leave when we're done and not have to sit around for, and then come back in after recusal. So, but that brings us, next item is the Annual Rail Corridor Transportation Management Agency Update. And here we are to review and, and actually accept that report. So, except is a bit of a tricky word. We may or may not have to vote on it. We just have to, to listen to it, but it depends on people's reaction. We'll see. Oh, and well, and recommend that the council accept the report, but it's the, I'm sorry, it's the same problem. I've had this as a commissioner for years, you know, what is accepting as opposed to rejecting? But it, gosh, my park days, we, I can't remember if we ever rejected anything. We asked for a few things to be changed. But anyway, we'll hold that thought until the, until we see what the report is. Staff, thank you.
So good evening. My name is Ryan Brunmeyer and I am Assistant Engineer with the Public Works Department. I will be providing the update tonight on the 2018 Rail Corridor TMA. So for the objectives, I'm going to be providing an overview of the TMA. I'm going to discuss the 2018 TMA Annual Report. That's going to include the data collection that we did for this year's trip generation monitoring, as well as talking about the compliance of all the different projects in the TMA. And then we're going to talk about the Bay Meadows Phase Two Trip Generation separately, as well as a summary of the intersection counts that we took. And then we are going to have the goal of the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission recommending that the city council accept the annual TMA report. So just to give a brief background on the TMA, the city adopted the San Mateo Rail Corridor Transit Oriented Development Plan in 2005. And this was to encourage TOD around the Caltrain stations. And it set a goal of reducing new vehicle trips in the corridor by 25%. And it also called for the creation of a Transportation Management Association, or TMA as we've been calling it. And it also required participation in the TMA for any new development that's shown in one of those gray TOD zones. It also strongly encouraged participation for any new development in the broader plan area, and it's also open to any properties outside of the area. The TMA is also required to provide an annual update to the city. So this is the Hillsdale Station area, and this plan was adopted in 2011. And what this did was expanded the area where new development is required to join the TMA. And so I just wanted to highlight that the boundary has increased to include additional properties that now are required to join the TMA. So here is a overview of the corridor. The little pins represent projects that are all currently represented in the TMA. The TMA board is comprised of developers and property owners who have received approval for development within an area that's required to join the TMA. And the city has representation as a non-voting, non dues-paying member. Over the course of 2018, the TMA held three meetings. And currently, the TMA is not funding any TDM services or programs. So for the 2018 monitoring program, traffic counts were collected on November 13th. They were originally scheduled to be taken in October, which is when we took them for the previous year's report in 2017. However, due to a PG&E project that was in the area, it was delayed. We had to push the counts back. That project consisted of full road closures on Delaware between 25th Avenue and Pacific Boulevard. It had a big impact and so we tried to hold them off for as long as we could. When we did take the counts during that month, the daylight savings time ended. So this meant that the counts were now being collected in the PM peak and one of those hours was now after sundown. So that was also a change from the previous year. And then also, the campfire had just started and was resulting in poor air quality at the time. And I'll make, I'll be talking about that in a little more depth in a little bit. So trip generation counts were taken during the PM peak at all completed projects in the corridor. And intersection counts were also taken across 17 intersections in the area. So here we have a list of all the projects that have been completed or are partially completed, with the exception of Bay Meadows, which I'll get to separately in a little bit. During the entitlement phase, short-term and long-term goals are identified and they are defined in the conditions of approval for the projects. The long-term trip reduction goals are based upon the full build-out of the corridor, essentially when the potential for transit-oriented development can be achieved. And many of these long-term goals are also based on the completion of the 25th Avenue Grade Separation Project and the improvements that are associated with that. So currently, projects are required to be meeting their short-term trip reduction goals. And the results from the counts this year can be seen in the right-hand column. I just wanted to point out that 400 and 450 Concar, as well as Station Park Green, their counts are significantly lower than their goals, just because for 400, 450 Concar, that project is complete and it was fully leased at the time, but it had not been fully occupied by those tenants. And Station Park Green only had one of their four buildings completed and occupied at the time. And the remaining three buildings are still currently under construction. So Delaware Pacific and 2000 Delaware are the two projects that are currently exceeding their trip reduction goal. And these two projects share a driveway. That's why their trip reduction goal was calculated as single number. So a brief history on these two projects, they were actually previously identified as non-compliant in the 2017 Annual Report. And they were required to submit revised TDM programs that included more aggressive trip reduction strategies. And as you can see in this timeline, the project was officially identified as, or the two projects, I'm sorry, was officially identified as non-compliant in the 2017 report on March 19th. The revised TDM programs were submitted in August of 2018. And they were presented to the SNI Commission and approved on September 12th. And the revised TDM programs had only been approved two months prior to when the counts ended up being collected. And those, again, were collected on November 13th. So I'm sure everybody can remember how bad the air quality was during the campfire. So I wanted to add this little animation to highlight what the air quality looked like on the day that the counts were taken. Across a majority of the region, the air quality was in unhealthy index and there were health warnings in place to encourage people to limit their exposure outside. So this likely prevented, or I'm sorry, this likely contributed to an increase in vehicle trips, as it may have prevented people from walking or biking or taking transit. So because of the previous impacts to the data collection and the air quality here, staff has made the decision to not identify Delaware Pacific and 2000 Delaware as non-compliant. These projects will, of course, be expected to meet their trip reduction goals for 2019, by which time they should have had sufficient time to implement their revised TDM programs. So switching gears a little bit to talk about Bay Meadows Phase Two. Their trip reduction is handled a little bit differently since it's done on the scale of the entire neighborhood. So their conditions of approval include a detailed plan that's supposed to be put into effect once the neighborhood is shown to be generating more than 1,100 trips. So based on all of the completed development in the neighborhood at the time of the report, they were estimated to be generating 1,247 trips. And that's based on all completed development in the neighborhood. So now that we've crossed that threshold, their conditions of approval state that we should be implementing a full neighborhood monitoring plan, and that will be done beginning with next year's report. As an interim measure, the driveway counts have been collected in the neighborhood at each block where development has been completed. We counted 599 trips total. And this is a 52% reduction from the 1,247 trips that the neighborhood is currently estimated to be generating. Sorry, I'm going to go back to this. One of the things about the driveway counts that's important to highlight is that this doesn't necessarily give us a full picture of the trips that are being generated by the neighborhood. It captures a majority of the trips, but the full monitoring plan that should be implemented next year will also take into account any vehicles coming in and out of the neighborhood that are parking on the street as well. And on a neighborhood level, that's a significant number of trips. So in addition to the trip generation monitoring, turning movement counts were completed at 17 intersections in the corridor. And here can you, can see the totals overall. Vehicles, we saw a 2% increase compared to last year. Pedestrians had a 1% increase. And bicycles saw a significant decrease of 22%. And this large decrease in bicycles, you know, is likely also a result of the poor air quality that we had in the region. So just want to highlight some key findings for the trip generation monitoring. As I previously said, Delaware Pacific and 2000 Delaware, they exceeded their short-term goal. However, staff will not be identifying the projects as non-compliant based on the impacts surrounding this year's data collection. And for Bay Meadows Phase Two, they will be required to do a full neighborhood monitoring for 2019. So we're, our recommendation is that the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission recommend that city council accept the San Mateo Rail Corridor TMA Annual Report. Thank you. Happy, and is there any questions?
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you very much. We'll do the same, the normal process. Commission questions, public, if any, and then comments from the commission. I have a couple of questions, so I'm going to start first for a change. One of them is, over the years, I've often struggled with this. I'd love to learn a little bit more about how counts are taken, the human and mechanical, you know, I know they're different, they're done differently in different parts of the country. So what are we doing here, may I ask? What was done here?
Sure, yeah. These counts are actually taken using cameras. So they put cameras out and just record a driveway for two hours and they'll have someone actually go back and watch the video and count the number of vehicles that went in and out of a driveway.
Okay. So it's a camera and counting. Nobody's forced to sit there, but it's not a light-sensitive, some sort of automatic counting either, which I've heard is being done somewhere, but not us. Okay, that gives me some idea. And that, and that includes the vehicles and the non-vehicles as well. You watch and you see.
Correct, yeah.
Walked in and out, okay. I imagine it might be a little tricky to, where vehicles are one thing, people and bikes don't always go in and out the driveway the same way.
Yeah.
You have to think about where the camera is pointed to capture that, but.
Correct, yeah. They usually put them out on city streetlights or city-owned infrastructure. They usually put them out on city streetlights or city-owned infrastructure in the right-of-way.
Okay. And one thing that I didn't see in the administrative report, and I don't know if it's appropriate to be in this report that we're to accept or not, but is the efforts to encourage, to assist reaching goals. I mean, I understand we didn't find anybody, you haven't found anybody in non-compliance. You kind of gave a pass on the one. But is that something that will be in this report, or does that come up at another time? Or only when there's gross non-compliance? We'd say, here's, what I'm trying to do is come up with, you know, that list that I know I've seen in the past, but I'd probably modified, how to get the vehicle usage reduced, which is what the goal really is.
Sure.
So each project has their own TDM plan that was approved at the time of the development, and each project is responsible for implementing that TDM plan. The annual report summarizes the total volumes for each project and in relation to the trip cap that was approved as part of their project development. Are you referring to the specific TDM measures that are in each plan, or TDM measures that the TMA would be proposing or supporting?
Probably the latter. You know, I mean, basically efforts to say, you know, okay, you know, there's only so much you can do. There aren't 1,000 things somebody can do, but maybe staff minds are getting more innovative, and maybe things are being added as to, here's a way over here, they were able to reduce traffic to encourage people to get on, to use the train, which is right there down the street. Those sort of efforts. I'd like to see those listed somewhere. I know I have in the past, but I guess it was in a different context.
Yeah, when the project last year was deemed non-compliant, staff worked with those developers to identify additional TDM measures that the SNI Commission approved, as Ryan had noted in his presentation. The Railroad TMA currently works with Commute.org. They're serving in the role of Executive Director right now. So they do have access to those services if they would like. To date, they have not utilized those services, but they do have the option in the future if they wish to do that. Commute.org is the congestion management agency for San Mateo County.
Okay. That gets me what I need to know for now. Thank you. Susan, your turn.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. The Delaware Pacific 2000 Delaware project has, as long as I have been on commissions, both public work and this one, has in 2016, 2017, and 2018 failed to meet its goals. And I recall sitting here in September and listening to their plan. I get that. But, you know, here's what I don't want to have happen, is we're doing a 2019 update, and we're in the same boat with them. And so I'm going to suggest, I don't know whether this is possible, is it possible for the city to maybe meet with them periodically? Just them alone and see how they're doing with their TDM plan? Is that what's discussed at these meetings? I noticed that there were three meetings in 2018. Does the city then get a sense if during these meetings that Delaware Pacific and 2000 Delaware are going to meet their objectives under this plan? And if no, then that's important to know. And if that is the case, it would probably behoove the city to work with them to ensure that when they're up, when we're doing this a year from now, they have met their goals.
We met with, we had a conference call with representatives from those projects when the results came in this year. And when we discussed the non-compliance issue, I think we were definitely also disappointed to see that their accounts were not...
Yeah, this is the third time, right? Three consecutive years, yeah.
I think, given the circumstances surrounding this year's data collection, especially with the air quality, we had a difficult time identifying them as non-compliant. But we did definitely state that, moving forward, we were not going to kind of cut them any slack in terms of non-compliance.
Right. So does it make sense to have an interim meeting just with those two properties to see how they're doing?
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
I think if I was the city, because I'd love to see them come up here next year and that they've met their goals.
Of course.
That's my preference, and I'm sure that's the rest of the commissioners' preference as well. But I think the city might have to be a little bit more energetic in these two properties and possibly have meetings on it, whatever it is, to make sure that they're on track. I'm just going to leave it at that. Given the circumstances, you know, everybody was under the same circumstances, right? All the other properties were as well. But it is what it is. Let me ask another question here. And you had mentioned that the boundary, and I understand boundaries are flexible, and that the boundary of the TMA has changed and has grown, rightfully so, to incorporate new projects. I have always been baffled with this TMA report, the fact that it doesn't include the largest employer in our city. And that's the county hospital. That's the county hospital. And if you look, if we go back and if we look at, can you pull up, do you have access to Figure Seven, which is the peak hour vehicles volume summary for the intersections, the 17 intersections?
I don't have that figure. I have it with me here, but not in the presentation.
You don't? Okay. It's a shame, folks won't be able to see that. But if we look at intersection 17, the El Camino Hillsdale Boulevard exit, put aside, and I saw that the counts in 2014, no, what was it, 2015, 16, and 17 were done improperly. Okay, get that. But still, that intersection woefully, if you look at the volume of vehicles, woefully exceeds any other intersection in this city. And it exceeds that intersection partly because of the volume of traffic that comes in and out of that hospital. That's our largest employer in the city. And that, and boundaries, as you said, are flexible. So my question is, and I've got problems with the TMA report, because the traffic on Hillsdale and the traffic at this intersection of El Camino and Hillsdale is related to the hospital traffic. They all come in at the same time, and they leave at the same time. I live next to it, I know. And so my question is, can we include the county hospital as, can we bring them into the TMA? Can they be added to the TMA? Or do you expand the boundaries to include the hospital? And I will guarantee you, item number 17, under intersections, those numbers will go down.
The initial boundary for the TMA area was developed as part of a planning effort, the Railroad TOD Plan. And then the boundary was expanded as part of another planning effort with the Hillsdale Station Area Plan. So other projects, when they're being developed, could opt in. There is an option for participation outside of those boundary areas where participation is required or encouraged. But an existing facility like the hospital, I'm not sure what type of process that would be, but I think we would have to look into that before giving you a firm answer on yes or no. But the boundary areas were developed as part of planning processes and forward-thinking plans.
Right.
And weren't they blessed by the council? It's not something that was done by staff.
Right. So the boundaries may not change, but they could be invited in and participate as any of the other entities are, be it Delaware 2000, you know, the 2000 Delaware project. I mean, that's what they are. They're their own little, they are their own little project.
It may be possible, if they wish to participate, that they could, but there is no mechanism by which they're required.
Right. So if an invitation to participate was made, because that is what causes the traffic backup on Hillsdale, and it's what drives the Hillsdale and El Camino Boulevard to woefully, I mean, it dwarfs any other intersection in this city, looking at Figure Seven. And it continues, and it's been consistently on that. So, because I have problems recommending, by the way, the TMA, simply because of this. I don't know how it happened. I don't know why it happened, but I think it's a legitimate thought.
I think that's something that we would have to look into.
Yeah, yeah.
And get back to you on.
Okay, yeah. No, I would expect, yeah. Thank you.
And my understanding, from having been involved, not in that specific process, but in similar processes, is that it's, I don't think that's something that staff or this commission can do on our own. It's something that would require council action, if they either wanted to change the boundary ad hoc or change the process for expanding the boundary. But that's...
No, it's not changing the boundary, it's just inviting them into the TMA.
Right. But this is all tied to development. So it's tied to new development, and it's a condition of getting your entitlements. Unless the hospital's looking for a massive remodel, they're not, there's no hook, yeah. That's my two cents. But we'll have to leave that for now. Commissioner Reyes.
Thank you. I just want to echo Commissioner Ruinsky's comments with regards to the hospital seem, you know, significant, and I understand that there isn't necessarily a process here. But flagging them as a significant source, you know, outside of the TMA that's in the same neighborhood is probably appropriate in the report, and perhaps council can explore means to address that. Had a couple other questions. From what I understood from the report, basically, the timing of the data collection got pushed back because of the PG&E work, and then the fire came in. And really, that pretty much invalidates the results of the data here. So it would seem more appropriate to say that the data results are not indicative of actual conditions because of the conditions under which the sampling took place, rather than to report those as findings.
I would agree that that is correct.
Yeah. And that's not a criticism in any way of staff. I'm just saying, you know, from the accuracy of the information that was presented, you know, those were conditions that were pretty much, you know, out of our control. So, but we should be, you know, clear about that, so the information that's going out is clear. Because somebody who just looks at that slide, they're saying, oh, okay, everything, you know, whatever, these were the findings, when in fact, they're not actually indicative of the conditions. The last item I have is, I'd like to understand a little bit more about what the full neighborhood monitoring of Bay Meadows Two is expected to look like, and what the implications of that are in the interest of full disclosure. I live in Bay Meadows, too, so this is a point of personal interest as well. But it's obviously an interest throughout the community in and around Bay Meadows Two.
Sure. So full neighborhood monitoring, essentially, what will be required is they will have to capture all of the vehicles that are coming in and out, all the gateways to the neighborhood, essentially all the streets. So, you know, Delaware, 28th, Franklin, instead of counting the driveways, you're literally counting at the entrances into the neighborhood. And they will likely still do it with a similar manner, some type of camera or other detection. And they will have to sort of individually identify each vehicle as they're coming in to be able to make sure that they're not just passing through. They'll monitor entrances and exits into the neighborhood. And essentially, what that will do is it'll account for all the vehicles that are coming in. It's a little bit more labor-intensive and expensive, just because you really have to pay attention to the individual vehicles instead of just counting a total. And there's also a few properties within Bay Meadows that we're not allowed to count trips for, including the Bay Meadows Park, as well as the Caltrain Station. So any trips that are generated by those two properties have to then also be subtracted from that overall total. So that requires us to also count at those two locations as well.
So then, the general methodology would be similar. A date would be picked, and everything gets deployed, and you count for that date. And is, in terms of the timeframe in the year, is there a typical time of the year that the sampling takes place?
Yeah, generally, it's, we try to keep it consistent and try and do it in October. This is while school is still in session. The weather hasn't gotten too rainy yet, where people might be discouraged from biking or walking. As long as it's on a consistent timeframe from year to year, and we're able to compare that data, that's really the most important thing. But the data collection is usually something that the TMA will discuss, and it really should be sort of like a decision with the TMA when that data is collected.
And then, so I assume that then there are subsequent thresholds for Bay Meadows Two as a neighborhood that would trigger then TDM actions based on exceeding certain thresholds?
Correct. So currently, they are also in their short-term phase of trip reduction, and they are required to have a goal of 10% reduction from whatever their ITE generation rate currently is at that time, based on the amount of development that they have completed in the neighborhood. And that's obviously going to be changing over time. So that's why they're a little bit different than a standalone project, where there's a number that's clearly defined in their conditions of approval. The trip generation rates for Bay Meadows were set for the entire specific plan amendment. And so that number is going to be changing over time, but the percent reduction that they have to meet will stay at 10% until they cross over into those next thresholds.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Cookie, do we have any speaker slips?
Yes, Adam Larrain.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Adam Larrain. I am a 20-year resident of the City of San Mateo. And I just wanted to give note, a bit of general disappointment in the data that was collected this year for this report, echoing, in effect, Commissioner Reyes's comments. To me, my initial thoughts behind the numbers that are collected, based on what the presentation given, mentioned some of these factors, the extra hour later, and, you know, essentially a different part of the year, and the fire on top of it, does lead me to believe that it's hard to use, hard to use this data in the ways that I think we were hoping to use it. And again, I wouldn't blame staff for it, except I would just mention that I think if there were, you know, some way to perhaps better communicate with PG&E or other potential hurdles that could get in the way of the dates that we're hoping to use for these counts, it would be great if staff could do what it could to try and make sure that next year's counts, or rather, this year's in 2019, are not impeded. Additionally, I haven't done as much research as I normally would if I were a commissioner on this particular agenda item related to this, but it seems to me that furthermore, you know, if, this may or may not be grounds for determining whether to approve or reject this report, or recommend an approval or rejection. But indeed, because of the factors surrounding this data, we would likely need to have some kind of either asterisk or, you know, summary paragraph next to the data when we come back to review the 2019 report, for example. Certainly, it would be important for staff to do what it could to remind the commission at that time of the differences in this data. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Drew?
Good evening, once again. Wasn't planning to speak, but then some discussion came up about boundaries. And so I think in part for public record, just talking about that a little bit, it's, I think, beyond just the hospital, it's Hillsdale Garden Apartments is pretty much outside of the TMA. And if you look at the density, and I can definitely attest to that from the parking that happens near where I live there, there's a lot of people living there. That's probably equivalent to Bay Meadows development and stuff. So, and the other thing with the boundaries would just be, my impression is the boundaries potentially could be expanded as part of the general plan update process. I don't know the magic that has to happen, but I understand, you know, we're doing the general plan potentially somehow through that, because the zoning for the TMA in part, like along El Camino, is very similar to the zoning south of the current boundary along El Camino. I mean, a lot of the zoning thing is very similar, and the TMA could have been all the way down El Camino, so to speak, to the Belmont City line. So, and I do think ultimately that's somewhat important because of how the station ended up moving, Hillsdale, Caltrain... important because of how the station ended up moving, Hillsdale, Caltrain Station to the north and just some of the analysis that was done. Kind of because the TMA boundary's not south, it does do some funny things when different analysis was done about that. And it's part of my passion a little bit to improve the, the access from the south. I think the station's going to be a great station, but it's just from the south side for the thousands of us who live south of Hillsdale. But anyway, that's kind of the boundaries I'm assuming maybe the general plan will be able to address. But otherwise, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Any further?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Back to the commission.
No further comments. I appreciate all your work on this. Thank you.
No, no further comments, but I think it's, it's, it sounds like if anything, if the hospital and/or, by the way, the Hillsdale Apartments is 710 units. That's its size. If there's a way to, at a minimum, include the hospital and possibly look at Hillsdale, but the hospital, it sounds like that's an invite and that is, that is something that would be done at city council level. Is that correct?
Any property that's currently outside the boundary can be invited to join the TMA by the TMA members. It's the enforcement of actually making it a requirement for a property to join the TMA is what would have to be done at the city level through a planning policy or, you know, another plan adoption.
Right. Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. Not to muddy the water then, recognizing that our job, though literally is to decide do we want to accept the report, it's really to, to allow the report to be ventilated and brought before the public, which it's been done ably, I may add. So I thank you, Ryan and Sue Allen. So I am going to suggest that we accept the report and recommend that the city council accept the report, knowing full well that they will, that note will be in the administrative report, but otherwise they'll read it fresh as they always do, if they choose to. Do we want to make a formal motion with the staff? Is that something we should do? I didn't, it wouldn't hurt anyone.
So moved.
Okay, I hear a motion. I'm going to second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, with a follow-up with the city council regarding the invite of the hospital.
Okay, the motion passes. I think the, the comment about the hospital can be appended. I have no problem with that.
Yep. Sounds good.
Okay. We just see that that's, that's a traffic issue, that it'd be nice if that was addressed this way or through this TMA in the future or not, but some other way. Fair enough. Thank you very much. All right, changing the guard and we're going to jump down to the Climate Action Plan Progress Report. And here, we're being asked to receive an update on the implementation. So again, there may or may not be a formal, there's no requirement of formal action, but we definitely look forward to getting this update.
All right, good evening. My name is Andrea Chow. I'm the Sustainability Analyst in the City Manager's Office. I'm here to present an annual progress report update to our Climate Action Plan. The commission has received several presentations already this year on the city's climate action plan, so I'd just like to clarify what I'm doing, what I'm providing this evening versus what you've heard at past commission meetings, both in March and January of this year. So every year since our Climate Action Plan was adopted in 2015, we had, staff has committed to coming to the Sustainability Commission at the time, and now the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission and city council on an annual basis to provide an update on the implementation of our adopted Climate Action Plan. So this evening, our presentation will highlight what the city has done on the adopted measures in our Climate Action Plan. And so I'll just start by talking about our 28 adopted measures and the progress we have made on 24 of those 28 measures. You guys have all heard about our adopted Climate Action Plan, but to give an overview, it is a roadmap of the different strategies that the city can use to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. The Sustainability Commission was very involved during the adoption time as you guys are now with the update to the overall Climate Action Plan document. And so we want to continue to involve the commission and council by providing these annual updates on our progress. So to provide an update, we do both a qualitative analysis and provide some key metrics to give you a sense of our progress on the different measures that were adopted. And so our 28 measures fall into these different broader subject areas. So under each category, there's, there's different, there's a list of recommended actions to achieving, let's say renewable energy or energy efficiency in our community. These aren't necessarily prescriptive measures that we, we have to do, but they're recommended actions to, to get us to that goal. And then I wanted to note some of the actions are redundant in that they are repeated under different measures. You might see that when you're reading the qualitative cap annual update, you might see certain measures for, let's say, commercial and residential energy efficiency under, under both categories. So we have a lot of different measures, but I wanted to highlight a few exciting ones under energy efficiency, especially what we've done here in city facilities. One major accomplishment is our Sustainable Solutions Turnkey Program, another fun acronym, SST. It's a program through PG&E. We executed a $3.2 million agreement to do a variety of upgrades at almost all city facilities. So that includes city hall, our corp yard, libraries, police department. And these energy efficiency improvements include interior and exterior lighting upgrades, replacement of mechanical systems, and implementation of integrated control strategies. So this is all going to save our energy at our city facilities. Work began just this past August in 2018 and will continue through 2020. So that covers kind of our larger buildings and facilities. We also were awarded grant funding from CCAG, $50,000, to upgrade more lighting at our smaller facilities. So we have a number of park restrooms in small facilities, mostly related to parks. And so we went through and upgraded 15 park facilities lighting. Also, under energy efficiency, there are a number of programs, regional and state, that we are able to promote to encourage energy efficiency in existing buildings. And, and so we're excited to report that we've had a number of property owners take advantage of the home upgrade program, which awarded 96 single-family rebates since their program had started. Multi-family is a similar program. We've had 15 multi-family property owners participate and that accounts for 905 units. And then with the Energy Savings Assistant Program, they provide energy and water audits. 434 units served. We've also had great participation through the San Mateo County Energy Watch Program, providing energy efficiency audits and retrofits to 68 businesses. And then 77 residents have requested energy audits through the Home Intel Program to understand more about their energy usage. And some more key highlights related to electric vehicles. This past year, the city installed six Level 2 electric charging ports at our city corp yard. The city library has a new all-electric outreach van that's in the picture there. And then finally, there are 102 electric vehicle chargers available at 21 different public locations in the city. So that, that's a lot of opportunity for those who drive electric vehicles to charge at these different public stations. So we've heard a little bit about our greenhouse gas emissions inventory, but the GHG emissions inventory is, provides a snapshot of the greenhouse gas emissions occurring as a result of the activities in the city of San Mateo. And so it includes emissions that are associated with everyday activities. It includes electricity and natural gas in our homes and in businesses, and then emissions resulting from fossil fuel-dependent vehicles, as well as the waste that's sent to, to landfills. So as part of the update to our adopted Climate Action Plan, we started with a greenhouse gas emissions inventory for 2017. And you heard from our consultant's presentation at a previous meeting that we found in our 2017 greenhouse gas emissions inventory that we have reduced our emissions by 18% below our 2005 baseline. And so we are on track and have exceeded our 15% below 2005 emissions by 2020 goal, which is really exciting. I think it's outstanding that our emission reductions to date have exceeded our goal and largely in part to the formation of Peninsula Clean Energy, providing cleaner energy to our homes and businesses in our community. I wanted to include that list as part of our presentation because it really does measure the progress we've made to date on all of those collective actions. So, so I've provided more of a progress update to what the actions have been so far in the city to, on the adopted Climate Action Plan. But looking forward, our Climate Action Plan update, I provided this timeline to kind of show where we are in the process. So last month in March, we talked about GHG reduction targets for 2030 and 2050, and we started to review the adopted measures in the cap. And then next month, we're looking forward to really discussing potential greenhouse gas reduction measures to include in that updated Climate Action Plan. That is not, that's not the only time you'll be able to provide input on the GHG reduction measures to be included in the updated plan. We're also planning to come back to you in July to really finalize those reduction measures. And then finally, in October, providing a draft Climate Action Plan for your review and recommendation to city council. So this evening, I just wanted to provide a progress report, an update on what we've done on the adopted Climate Action Plan, and kind of conclude here with where we are in the larger document process. And this is my last slide of the presentation.
Andrea, thank you very much. We'll do our usual questions, public and comments. Questions, Rafael?
Thank you, Andrea. Great report. And you may be shocked to, to know that I actually don't have many questions, except to say thank you for all the great work that you're doing. And it's great to see the trend line on the emissions going in the right direction. So really good news. Thank you.
That was more of a comment than a question, but I think we'll allow it because it was so positive. Thank you, Rafael. Susan?
I just have a, I just have a question looking at the timeline, so I would just leave this up. I see in October 29 to review the draft and make a recommendation to city council. I have a question here, actually a request. I'm wondering if we can get the, the draft in October 2019 and then make the recommendation in November, at the, the following month on November 9, in November. You know, we won't see the draft until a few days before the meeting, the final draft, so.
That's really no problem. There's no set deadline by which the cap update needs to be adopted. You know, so the intent of that was that you would be reviewing the measures that went into it all along and the, the draft would just really be the compilation of the work you've already done. But if you want two meetings to deliberate that, that's fine. And you can even decide at that time, too.
Right. That, that would be my initial reaction to, to get the draft and then we'll have some time to kind of digest it and make our final recommendations.
Thank you. I don't have anything further at this point. Any speaker slips?
No, I have no speaker slips.
Okay. I'm going to guess we don't have a lot of comments after that, other than to say thank you and if anybody wants to jump in, hearing none. Thank you, staff. Andrea's very useful.
Kathy, too. Thank you for all your work on this.
Again. See you again and again.
Yes.
Yeah. Repeat offender from staff. Okay, next to the reach codes and...
Right. So I need to recuse myself on this item. As some of you may be aware, I am, my day job is Director of Energy Programs for Peninsula Clean Energy. Peninsula Clean Energy has sponsored the technical assistance work that San Mateo and other cities in the county are availing themselves on with respect to building reach codes. And I have a material role with regards to direction setting on the program. So with that, in the interest of ensuring that there is no real or perceived conflict of interest, I'm, I'm going to recuse myself. So thank you all.
Yep. Thank you. Avoiding the appearance of a conflict is, our venium propriety is laudable. And thank you for coming up with it. So disclosed and recused. We are, just to provide feedback, which is good because we actually don't have a quorum if we had to pass anything. And I think Andrea, you are coming back to us. So, to staff.
All right. Great. So I'm here to talk about our potential reach codes for the next building cycle. Sorry, I'm pausing. Do you guys have it on your screen?
No.
Okay. Let me try one more time. Okay, here we go. The, the last time I made a presentation on reach codes, I was really introducing the topic. And so again, yeah, the goal of my presentation is to ask for your feedback and direction on potential reach codes that the city could adopt. But let me start with an overview of the reach code adoption process and really what they are. Reach codes, it's a term that we use to describe going above and beyond what the state's requirements are. And so the building code is adopted every three years. The last code cycle was adopted in 2016 and went into effect on January 1, 2017. And so this next code cycle would be adopted this fall in 2019 and then go into effect on January 1, 2020. So that means any reach codes that were adopted for the 2016 code cycle would expire at the end of this year. So for the energy code, reach codes, the California Energy Commission requires a cost effectiveness study be conducted and filed to the state to demonstrate that the reach codes are cost-effective. In other words, that they're financially responsible and do not represent an unreasonable burden to applicants. Contrary to that, and a cost effectiveness study is not required for green building reach codes. And so there, there are basically reach codes for two sections of the building code that we're concerned about, and especially with sustainability, and that's the energy code section and the green building section. So there are two types of energy code, reach codes. Jurisdictions can take on two different types of approaches. One is a performance-based ordinance approach. So that means you're mandating an increase in the overall energy efficiency required of that building, but you're really leaving flexibility for the builder on how they decide to achieve this goal. So it's generally done in like a percentage mandate, go this much higher than what the state requires. Another type of approach is a prescriptive ordinance. So that means mandating the implementation of a specific type of measure. That's, that could be mandating solar panels, which the city do, did do. That's, that could be mandating solar panels, which the city did do in the 2016 code cycle. So all of the city's adopted reach codes are all prescriptive approaches for new construction. I have a slide that shows the city's adopted reach codes for the 2016 cycle. So we adopted two energy code reach codes and two green building code reach codes. For the energy code, we mandated solar installation and all new construction. We also required cool roof installations on all new multifamily and non-residential projects with low sloped roofs. For the green building code reach code, we required a higher percentage of EV readiness for multifamily and non-residential projects. In our code, we defined EV readiness as having the adequate electrical capacity and conduit for a future EV charger to be installed. So we didn't actually require that the EV charging unit be installed at the time. As part, another green building code, reach code measure was the requirement for single family projects to install the laundry to landscape diverter valve. And that's kind, that's often the barrier to setting up a laundry to landscape gray water system to reduce water consumption. So these were the City of San Mateo's 2016 adopted reach codes. In the 2016 code cycle, there were two other cities in San Mateo County that adopted reach codes, including Brisbane. City of Brisbane actually leveraged the City of San Mateo's cost effectiveness studies and adopted similar approaches to mandatory solar and cool roofs for new construction. Portola Valley's were, reach codes were a little bit different. They used a performance-based approach with the Green Point Rated System to require higher energy efficiency for single family. And then they also had requirements around solar PV readiness and EV readiness for different building types. I also want to point out, they adopted their reach codes later in the code cycle in 2017. So the way we're going through the reach code process is really different than what we took on in 2015. In 2015, the city started to look at measures on their own. The city had its own consultant doing its own cost effectiveness study and analyzing specific measures that the Sustainability Commission had recommended that staff look into. This time, there are a number of state and regional agencies and also other cities involved in this reach code process. Two very important agencies that are helping us right now are through the statewide Codes and Standards Program. It's a program funded by the different investor-owned utilities, IOUs, across the state. And then, as Rafael mentioned, Peninsula Clean Energy has been a major supporter of reach codes in, in our county. And so I wanted to point out some of the support they've been offering. So the statewide program has, they have a focus specifically on energy code reach codes. And so their support will focus on energy code reach codes. They are also statewide, and so they have been supporting jurisdictions across the state, which means their cost effectiveness study was broad and included all 12 climate zones so that any jurisdiction across the state could leverage it. They're, they're offering technical support to cities because they would also like to see reach codes for the energy code adopted. Peninsula Clean Energy is providing technical assistance for both energy code, reach codes, and green building code, reach codes as related to electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Their goal is to develop model ordinances for cities across San Mateo County to adopt. They hope that different cities across the county would adopt their model ordinances because they're interested in a more unified approach across the county. And then they're also offering specific technical support to, to different cities to interpret the cost effectiveness study findings and adopt different reach codes. So I'm going to start with what the statewide program developed, which was a cost effectiveness study for different performance-based approaches for new construction, for different building types. So the way that cost effectiveness study works is first they select different building prototypes. CE stands for Cost Effectiveness Study on your slide. And so these were, on the left, the five different building prototypes that were analyzed under the different packages that they, they tested. So what the cities do using the cost effectiveness study is they can leverage the results and the findings to develop different policy approaches. So I just want to point out that there, there are certain findings that we were able to gather because the city's development includes, for sure, single family development and three-story office buildings. But one major gap that we didn't see included in this cost effectiveness study was three or, three-story or more multifamily buildings. This has been a primary type of development in our city, and I just want to share that we cannot leverage the results of the cost effectiveness study and apply that to these building, to that building type. So there's been a lot of interest in mandating that new construction be all-electric, or building buildings that would have no natural gas services. This slide really depicts the different types of typical natural gas used in buildings. So an all-electric building would have to have all-electric appliances for our typical, instead of our typical natural gas uses for heating, clothes drying, and cooking. I think one of the more challenging pieces we've heard about going all-electric is that people are very attached to natural gas stoves and natural gas cooking. But the interest in electrifying our buildings really stems from the fact that Peninsula Clean Energy is providing very clean, 90% carbon-free electricity. And so this is a huge opportunity to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions from our building sector. I also wanted to share that to date, the city has not seen any all-electric buildings constructed, just voluntarily. That has not yet happened in our city. So because there's been a lot of interest in going all-electric, the statewide study explored the opportunity to encourage building electrification. So mandating that all-new construction be all-electric through the building reach code process, it has not been done. This is largely because of legal implications improving the cost effectiveness of mandating only all-electric. Instead, what has been the leading approach is providing two options for builders to meet compliance. So that's offering first, two options. One, a mixed-fuel option, so an option that includes electricity, natural gas, has a higher efficiency than what is mandated by code. And then if a builder decides to go all-electric, that builder can build a building at code minimum. And so this is one way that other jurisdictions, and this is completely approved by the CC, is to have two options for compliance. So the statewide program analyzed this approach. And I wanted to, so this is the slide that summarizes what are our possible feasible approaches to reach codes for the 2019 code cycle based on the findings in that report. And there are two performance-based ordinances and a few prescriptive ordinance options to consider. First, starting at the top, as I mentioned, a performance-based approach really considers the overall efficiency in going beyond that. And so for the specific building type that they studied, office, office buildings, a city in our climate zone could mandate a higher efficiency for mixed-fuel buildings or require all-electric buildings. So again, going back to my last slide, that would, you could provide those two pathways for that office building prototype or building type. Similarly, you could make that mandate for single family and low-rise multifamily new construction. Low-rise is defined as multifamily under two stories. Those are two different packages that could encourage electrification in these building types that was proven cost-effective in, in the statewide study. These are all preliminary findings, and when talking to the consultants, they are, they think that these other two prescriptive ordinance options, numbers three and four, are likely feasible based on their findings. So the city has already adopted a reach code to mandate solar on all-new construction. In the 2019 building cycle, the, there will be a residential requirement, a single-family residential requirement for solar, but multifamily and commercial remain an opportunity. And so the city could choose to continue our reach code and mandate solar installation on those building types. That's number three. Another preliminary finding from the cost effectiveness studies is that the city could consider mandating solar installation and onsite battery storage in all building types except for multifamily, four stories, and higher in hotels. So this has, the, mandating solar installation and onsite battery storage has a large incremental upfront cost when you consider the cost of the battery to the builder. I do, I want to say that we haven't seen a lot of batteries installed in San Mateo, but this was from the study, a preliminary finding that this could be a cost-effective approach. So the, these are the ones that I think have come up in the past that we wanted to bring for your consideration. I have a couple more slides. One, highlighting the approaches that were tested that were shown not to be cost-effective. And so there's preliminary analysis that indicates that we could not require an all-electric pathway for mid- and high-rise multifamily. So again, that building type was not studied in the statewide study. And so we're waiting for, to confirm those findings in June, but that, I wanted to bring that information forward so you were aware. The same finding was true of hotels and retail and restaurant. Hotels were studied in the cost effectiveness study, and it was not cost-effective to mandate an all-electric pathway, but, and then the same for retail and restaurant. And then we talked about cool roofs in the past. We have an adopted cool roof reach code measure right now. The statewide study really focused on performance-based approaches and not prescriptive. And so the cool roof measure was not studied. But after talking with consultants, early analysis indicates that this might not really be impactful as a standalone measure. So there, there's a lot to consider. Okay, two more slides, one on our green building reach code options for electric vehicle readiness requirements. So the 2019 state code has EV readiness requirements for all types of new construction except for the multifamily three to 16 units. So EV readiness to the state means having panel capacity and conduit running from the panel to the charging space. And so this really makes it easier for our charging unit to be installed in the future. So the city has an adopted reach code for 2016. In 2019, the multifamily for 17 units and above, the EV readiness for 10% of spaces will catch up to the city's reach code requirement. That is the only place where the state will catch up to the city's reach code in terms of EV readiness. So a cost effectiveness study is not required to adopt a green building code, reach code, but Peninsula Clean Energy is supporting cities in providing cost, cost analysis and recommendations about this area. But we are still waiting for their recommendations to come out later this month. So two things to consider when it comes to green building reach codes and possible approaches to EV charging. The city could consider requiring a higher percentage of EV-ready spaces than what the state requires. And the city could also consider requiring the installation of actual EV charging units. The state is not making that requirement right now. In the last study in 2016, when the city was considering this, one scenario that was considered was requiring a percentage, let's say of 10% of EV-ready spaces, and then requiring a smaller portion of, of that be, have actual EV charging units installed. So these are just possible approaches to encourage EV, EV readiness and encourage driving electric. And so today, I'm really looking for your feedback and direction on these possible and feasible approaches for both the energy code, reach codes, and the green building code, reach codes.
And through the chair, if I may add something. So this is a very complex technical topic, and even Andrea and I, being professionals in this field, have, have gone through quite a bit of elaborate discussions with the consultants, even understand it ourselves. And we've tried to really try to boil it down to as digestible as possible. So I just want to acknowledge that this is very complicated, and we've tried to make it as simple as possible, but we certainly understand that there may be a lot of further questions about what this really means. And then I also just want to highlight one of the really key considerations we did the last building code cycle, which is something we do want the commission to keep in the back of their mind, is when we were looking at measures last time, we had a lot of debate about, you know, whether we should be working towards things that people were already doing and making everybody do them, or whether we should be including things that nobody was really doing and making everybody do them, if you know what I mean. So, so a lot of these measures are very cutting-edge that are being studied right now. And so as Andrea mentioned, for example, the all-electric buildings, although there, I think, are a couple planning applications that are just going through the entitlements process that are considering being all-electric, there has been nothing constructed yet. So it is, it is a big leap to be considering possible mandates towards something that is not currently being done. And that just is something that, you know, it's not impossible to do. It may be done in other jurisdictions, but it's just a consideration we want the commission to keep in mind when considering what to move forward with. And I also want to add on the EV readiness policy, when we did initially have a policy the last code cycle, where we had looked at, I think it was 3% of the total spaces that were requiring to be EV-ready actually have EV chargers installed. That was the one area of our code where we had a lot of negative feedback from the development community, who said that it was really not cost-effective for them to be able, to be required to do that, and was going to be a major challenge. So that was why that policy wasn't included at that point in time. So that would be something where, you know, whatever policies we do develop, we would definitely want to have stakeholder meetings with the development community to get a sense of if anything is really a major concern for them.
Thank you, Andrea and Kathy. Thank you both for all that. Since there are only two of us left up here, I think we can do questions, comments, and anything else we want at the same time. And I'm actually going to start. I don't have many, but on that last bit, you know, again, this is all preliminary, but it would seem to me that requiring, yes, well, I agree stakeholders need to be brought to the table and, and be given the opportunity to get buy-in as much as possible, but the I- idea of making EV infrastructure ready but not actually having any chargers does seem a little counterproductive. And I think there's a push-pull mechanism. I think if, if developments actually have EV-ready spaces that have chargers, it actually goes a long way to attracting people or incentivizing people to live in those buildings to actually buy electric vehicles, as opposed to, well, gosh, I'll charge it at work, or I'll have to go pay somewhere else. So I, that just seems to me that we, we should look at, I can see the opposition, but I think we're, it, it seems to me that we're penny-wise and pound foolish if we're only going halfway and saying, you got to have a few spaces that are, have conduits, but no, but no chargers. So I really do think that's something we should look at. I would encourage that. And I think there's actually some downstream bang for the buck on that one. And then a question I actually have is, you know, I don't know if this is within the scope of what would be a REACH code. We're really dealing with, with new construction, but how about something that's an encouragement or an incentive? I don't think we can do much in the way of mandates for existing building, because quite frankly, when you're talking single-family, the amount of, of new construction, even defined to include substantial remodels, is negligible, right? 14 a year or something, I saw in one of the documents. But when you're coming to, we're talking about encouragement or incentives, I mean, the normal ways to do those are, I mean, I understand, I think from the Climate Action Plan, you know, things that we've already done, the city's already done there, streamlining, permitting, more information on the webpage and so forth. But actual economic incentives, the, the classic models are either tax incentive, which probably something we can only do countywide, probably be very hard to city, we don't really collect tax in this, in this realm. The other would be good old payments, you know, subsidies, like we do on the lateral program, whether that's something the city might, you know, it's, it's spending money, but it might encourage homeowners to, to go that extra mile and put things on the roof. As something just to consider. Would that be something that could be within the scope of this, or is?
I can definitely offer a response. So you're right, the, the study and what has been done for REACH codes has been focused on new construction. I mean, it is an opportune time to build the most efficient building you can, most sustainable building you can. But you're right, there's a lot of existing building stock out there. Some of our rebate programs across the state encourage some retrofits, but I think that's definitely something that we can talk about through our Climate Action Plan to, so I'm saying it's likely, we haven't seen it done widely through the REACH code process, is addressing the retrofits and remodels, or, or just existing building stock. However, there, there are definitely approaches that we can consider to really encourage retrofits. One is benchmarking or requiring benchmarking or energy audits of your buildings to really put the information in property owners' hands so that they can make the decision to upgrade their home. So the C E Berkeley has done that by mandate at the time of sale of a property, so that gets at the existing building stock. That's one option.
Okay. Yeah, it, it may be outside the scope, nobody else has done it in REACH code, but just a straight economic incentive, I mean, you know, you got to run the numbers, but it would seem, you know, I certainly could make the argument if the numbers bear it out, that it is to the benefit of all of us in this 100-plus-thousand community to have a small amount of our tax money that flows through ultimately into the general plan go to, to put solar on our neighbor's roofs.
So I think actually, to add on to what Andrea was saying, through the Climate Action Plan next month, when we look at new measures, I think looking at incentives that encourage electrification of appliances, or maybe some rebate of the actual cost of upgrading the electrical system is going to be a measure you're going to see. Now, we would hope that PCE would take on a significant role in financing that because of their, they collect funding for this, but it's something certainly that the city can work with them on and possibly on a much smaller scale offer some level of rebate.
Okay, I appreciate that. Susan?
Well, I would have liked to have had this presentation when, when the rest of the documents came out. Andrea, I'm going to ask you this question. Do you have any specific questions that you would like our feedback on in your presentation?
I think I, if I were to point to a specific slide, I, I am interested in your reaction to both this slide, what you guys, and Cliff kind of provided some feedback on his interest in actually requiring EV charging units to be installed. So I'd, I'd like to hear your.
Yes, and yes.
Okay. So that's related specifically to the green building code REACH codes. And then I want to switch the slides because I'm also interested in your reaction to these possible options.
Sure. Okay, why don't we go back to the EV?
Sure.
That's a little simpler and straightforward. You know, and here was a question, I saw that, you know, we have these EV readies, and then if, if there was any installation of a charger in the future, my question was, who pays for that?
That, that would be the, at the property owners.
What are the property owners?
But there, there are incentive programs available to property owners to install EV charging units. I mean, EV readiness is very important because retrofitting to install chargers is so much more expensive for the trenching to get the conduit and raceway from the panel.
Right, yes, so essentially, it's, it's like 90% there.
It's, it's very costly, that, just that portion.
Right, if you're EV-ready versus non-EV-ready.
Right.
So.
But you're 0% there in terms of efficacy, I mean, actually being able to utilize the thing. But I agree, economically, yeah, you don't want to go the retrofit route. So there's some value to doing that if you expect that the last, the last mile will be dealt.
Right, yep. No, that's fine. So I think, you know, going back to having, what would constitute a property owner to go from EV-ready to installing EV chargers?
So for a multifamily property owner, that might be one of their tenants asking them.
Right, okay.
Market force, I guess.
Yeah, market forces.
Okay. Then I, I would probably start to lean towards two. And I would also, I saw in the documentation, look, one is better than nothing, two is ideal. And I saw in the documentation here, it said all building types except non-residential construction and multi, multifamily buildings with three to 16 units do not have EV space. Yep, right. So there's, there's no EV-ready for multifamily units, three to 16, as well as non-residential construction. That's what's in the notes here. And so my question was, what is non-residential construction? Is that office buildings?
Yes.
Okay. Now, to me, that doesn't make sense, and here's why. The state has a lot of incentives, particularly through passing, giving passes to electric cars, right? I'm on the highway, I have a pass, but yet then I go to a building where there is no EV charging.
So I just want to comment that this is the state's code. This isn't, our, our code that we adopted mandated 10% across the board. So for whatever reason, and it's kind of bizarro that the state kind of left out, like the multifamily three to 16 units, it's, I, I, there's no explanation, but they did, but we didn't.
So essentially, in 2016, we filled a gap and made sure to require EV readiness when the state had no requirement.
Right.
So the state, in green building code, for whatever reason, defines or mandates this for multifamily of 17 units above, so there continues to really be this gap of the two to 16 units.
I'm not so much concerned about the three to 16, because there's not a lot of them being built. Actually, most of them are six to 12 stories. That's what's being built. If you look at over, what's, what's the development being put where the Rite Aid is?
Passage.
Passage, thank you, yes. Thank you, Kathy, it's passage. Bohannon's got a proposed 12-story, Hillsdale Garden Apartments is, is six to seven, which is, and then I'm going to come back and ask about those, because that's what's going in. And I also want to pick up on, I think, a really good point that Cliff brings up is the existing infrastructure. Because big picture, it's really going to be the, it's, there's a lot more existing infrastructure than there is new projects going in. And, and to some degree, that's probably where some additional savings could be, had, would be my, my instincts would tell me that. But here, Andrea, I'm just looking at, at, at the write-up that you provided. The 2019 green building code will catch up with the city's 2016 REACH requirements in terms of EV space requirements for all building types except non-residential construction and multifamily buildings with three to 16. Is that statement in this slide?
Yeah, yeah, so for, for those, for everything above single-family, we required 10%. So the only place where they caught up with us was the.
Okay, got it, all right.
Sorry, it is really confusing.
Right, yeah. It would have been really helpful to have this, I think at times it might be useful to have these presentations beforehand, because I'm having trouble making the connection between what was written. Okay, so, all right, now I understand. So, you know, is non-residential with at least 10 parking spaces, at least six EV-ready, six, 6%?
That is the state's requirement.
Right, and non-residential is office, and, and people could be driving, once again, with their electric vehicles, and I think Commissioner Robbins brings up a very good point, that they should be actually with chargers. Because I might be, like I said, the state gives me a pass to drive an EV vehicle on a, on a highway, and so I'm going to probably take advantage of that. I'll go to work, but then I might not have any chargers. So it's kind of defeating a little bit of what the state's doing. So we've got to kind of pick up the last 2% there. So I, I would, I would argue for sure, if non-residential is office, then I would have that, I would have them EV, not EV-ready, but with chargers installed.
Thank you for your feedback.
Yeah. What's that?
Oh, I just, thank you for your feedback. That's, I'm interested in understanding where you guys would prioritize.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, look, the state is going to, the, the state's gone through, and actually the feds have gone through an enormous amount of efforts in terms of tax write-offs or credits and passes for EV, for electric vehicles. So the question is, what can the city do to help to facilitate the last 2% of that journey? And so having EV-ready and chargers, and, that is, having chargers installed, particularly in non-residential buildings, but I'm also going to say in, in single and, or, so not less single, but multifamily three and up is probably just as important as well.
Well, and to, to double down on that, if you will, I mean, as, as it's popularly known, range anxiety is the big problem with acceptance of EVs. And I'll confess, I'm driving a Volt with a V because of range anxiety, because, you know, I, I go all-electric about 90% of the time, but there are just a few spots, including my office down in Mountain View, that it's hard to find a charger, so I need to have the gas backup. And I think that's not an uncommon experience. So that whether you're at your old infrastructure, 100-year-old home like I'm in, or whether you're in a new one that might have a charger put in, it's, once you're out and about, finding those chargers or just having them available, you know, we have some in the city, there are apps that help find, but requiring them in non-residential, I think would actually have a meaningful impact for people who are out there shopping and saying, well, you know, I want to do it about town, but I'm a little afraid, you know, the extra, the bit. Anyway, that's our, my feedback.
Sure, yeah, yeah, not a problem. Okay, so that, and does that answer questions that you had here on this particular slide?
Yeah.
Yeah, and what was the other one?
This one.
So I'd love to hear feedback on the different energy code, REACH code approaches.
Right.
And just to add, it doesn't have to be, so you could pick the performance-based measures, and one and two are different building types, they're pretty much the same measure for different building types that, that are eligible. And you could also, it's not either-or, so you could also do the prescriptive ordinance. However, under the prescriptive, three and four is very similar to the EV thing, where, where four includes three, but takes it a step further.
Right.
If we didn't confuse you enough.
Right, yeah, yeah. You know, I'm wondering if anybody from the audience might have any input?
We might, yeah, we might in a moment, but if you don't mind, maybe the two of us can look at this offhand, if you don't mind if I chime in a little bit.
And you don't necessarily have to choose one, as much as you could express where your, your interest in prioritizing and whether that's building electrification or solar.
As a, as a policy matter, I prefer incentives to prescriptions, carrots to sticks. The performance-based is actually a carrot is, I mean, a stick as well, but it allows some flexibility. But I think in this area, we probably, both types are accepted, but you just have to be a little careful with the prescriptive ordinance. I would be, I'll go backwards, and my initial feedback is mandatory solar, it can be factored in, I mean, you can run the numbers, developer, whether it's for any building type, can factor that in, and you can see the return over time, it might be eight years, 10 years, 12 years, whatever. The battery, the onsite battery is a lot, there's a lot of upfront cost, and it's a lot harder, I think, more your field a little bit, you've run into it, but I'm, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit on seeing how you can justify the cost of the battery with savings, both energy-wise and economically, for the city writ large. There's a value to battery storage, but it's really, you know, when the power goes out, you know, I don't think the current battery storage is, is kicking in overnight, you know, somehow filling in the gap for your solar usage.
I believe that, that is the intention, is that battery, battery storage would help during, because solar is providing the most energy during the day when.
Yeah, I don't think that's where it's getting yet, but I, I might be wrong, y'all have been looking at this, we're all kind of struggling.
So I think it is getting at that, and I will say that the only way that this is even on the list is that it, according to the C E C standards, which do look at costs over a significant period of time over the building's operation, so it is a big upfront cost, but it, over the lifespan of the building, these studies have shown that it's cost-effective. But, like I said, the other consideration is, despite that, we're also not seeing a lot of people doing it, so, you know, it is, again, a consideration to mandate something that's not already being adopted.
And I'm not expert, I've looked into it a little bit, you know, particularly with Tesla, I know some of those folks. And, and so I'm kind of intrigued to learn that, you know, if it's, if it's the cover the darkness time, that makes more sense, but these things are still being marketed generally as, you know, what you've got, is, is filling in when the power really goes out over time. So I'm, I'm not, you know, I need to get up to speed on that. I'm not convinced that I'd go with number four yet, I'd need to learn a lot more. Number three makes more sense, I think, to me. And on the performance-based, you know, I, I, I support both. I'm, I'm also, I'll just say, as a matter of feedback, this all-electric, I think, is, is not as simple as, as people think. I, I get it because we have PCE, it makes sense, but not only do people like their, their gas stove tops, you know, we've got this, the gas fireplace issue as opposed to burning wood. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm a little loathe to, to get too far in front of our skis when it comes to, you know, trying to mandate that, where if you do things in this performance-based, then the market gets to play in a little bit. Developers can say, well, you know, we can, I think we can achieve some goals with this mixed fuel and still, and still make money because we'll still be able to attract tenants or owners who, who, who say, yeah, fine, I have to have an electric dryer, I can live with that, but, but don't take away my, my cooker, my stove top. But, and that's my reaction.
If I look at three and four, regarding onsite battery storage, that is evolving, and Tesla is, has got a battery, and I think it's about $1,000. I don't know, I don't have all the details about what Tesla's doing, but they are working on that, and I don't know how much it holds, I don't know how long it holds, but they are selling it, it's about $1,000. So I don't know if I would necessarily, I think that we need to get more information about battery storage. We don't want to make it so onerous. You know, three on prescriptive is, is pretty much, it says mandatory solar installations, and it's all building types. And, and once again, our new buildings going in are over, by the way, two stories, three stories, they're huge. So I don't know why under four, except multi-story fours, except multifamily four stories and higher, and hotels. I don't know why that exclusion is in there.
So I can explain that. So these findings are based on the analysis of different energy efficiency packages that are paired with both solar installation and onsite battery storage. So they are tested as an entire package. I don't want to get too into the weeds, because I can't, really, but I, from the consultants and their analysis, I was told that buildings that had higher hot water demand didn't pass the, the efficiency test for the, for, for those certain prototypes. There weren't likely to be a feasible approach to mandate this technology.
The solar and the battery?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So three, under prescriptive, almost makes sense. I would, by the way, also include cool roofs. Look, cool roofs, you mentioned, as a, as a, you know, cool roofs could work, not as a standalone measure, but cool roofs would reduce the, the need for air conditioning or, or, or fans, or anything along those lines, right? Isn't that the purpose of cool roofs?
I think one of the reasons why cool roofs isn't recommended as a standalone and, and-
Yeah, no, it wouldn't be as a standalone.
It is partially because the state keeps changing the cool roof standard, and so the state building code is already incorporating, has upgraded the standard for roofs already. So it's not, it's not that cool roofs aren't being done, it's just, I think it's another example where the state code has caught up to where we were. So going further beyond the state code is what they're saying for 2019 may not be. So there's already cool roofs required by state code.
Right, okay. And that's why they're not in here. Okay. Because cool roofs with, with mandatory solar makes sense. But I, what I hear is saying it's already being required. Okay, got it. And regarding performance-based, all office buildings, I, I, once again, I don't know why there's not all, it, it, it just, I don't, once again, these are probably studies that show-
Exactly.
Under performance-based, office buildings require option for higher efficiency for mixed or all-electric and single-family. You know, I don't have much input on, on that, frankly. They just have, what they have done, and I see what they're doing, they're doing their studies, and they're looking at, they've determined that these models are not effective. That is, these are the models, single-family and, under option to, and single-family and low-rise, multifamily, under two stories, require option of either higher energy efficiency or mixed-fuel buildings or all-electric buildings, you know. I get it, it's just so parsed, and I don't know how relevant it could be.
So I think what you want to look at is, just maybe to put in a little bit of perspective, is, you know, sometimes when approaching these building codes, you can say, "Okay, you know, these are the type of buildings we want to impact." So you can say, "Okay, this is just an example, so don't take this as a recommendation." But you can say, "You know what? Let's try this performance-based ordinance that encourages people to go all-electric, but gives them another option if they don't want to. But we're going to focus that, this building code cycle, on commercial buildings." So all-new office buildings constructed in San Mateo would have to meet that. And we'll, you know, it's not effective for multifamily. If you threw in the, the number two, single-family and low-rise, you're probably impacting 14 buildings a year, you know, it just gives you-
It's not that, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
It gives you an option, if you want to focus the code and say, "We're gonna, we're gonna be a little harder on office buildings than we are on residential construction." And, and just also keep in mind that whatever we do, we're doing for three years, and then we're going to have to do it again. So, and the state code is going to continue to evolve. So nothing we're doing is going to, like, set in stone the policy for an extended period of time. It's all just sort of a-
Right.
It's, it's a test. And I will say, the mandatory solar installation policy that we currently have in place has worked really well. We've never heard a complaint. And I enjoy, at the planning commission hearings, hearing developers brag about it as a sustainability measure that they're doing, when it's actually mandated by us. So they, they've managed to spin it to their benefit.
Okay. Why don't we open it to the public, see if anybody-
Yeah, I was actually going to be, a question I had, though, it's, you know, we started off saying, you know, "We do need to get input," and it sounds like you have in the past, and we will going forward, from all the stakeholders, including developers. And I'm not carrying water for developers, but at the same time, you know, if what we propose as, as a reach code is something that they, they just don't think that they can sell, then they're not going to build, and that kind of defeats the whole point.
Yes. Stakeholder outreach is very important. We've held, well, PCE has helped host one event for stakeholders this past month. And so they talked about these results. I didn't hear any specific feedback and opposition to any of these approaches, but it is a lot of information to digest.
And I think, and again, they hadn't developed the model ordinances that they're even proposing people. So, so it was very just generic at that point.
Very conceptual.
So, once we have a more, this is what we're actually proposing.
Then the advocates, pro and con, will come out of the woodwork. But that's fair, it'd be good to hear from them. The public, what do we have?
Adam Lorraine.
We know Adam.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Adam Lorraine. Again, I just wanted to give my opinion that I, as a resident of San Mateo, would very much like to see the city of San Mateo continue its leadership role on these, on these codes. I, I appreciate Kathy's comment just made a moment ago about how these codes have played out, the last, the last set of codes. And I, I think they've been quite impactful. I think when, as, as a layman, as an attendee of planning commission meetings, I, I gathered a sense of tremendous impact on what those reach codes have done to the large developments that we're currently seeing come in, come into effect. And I think while we've made some gains on other measures of our climate action plan as well, it, it, it was clear to me, at least on this side, when we're talking about these kinds of things, that there were a number of things that we would love developers to do of their own accord, or encourage them to do in one way or another without any teeth. And we may or may not see any of that happen, but these codes worked. So in that sense, I, I get the feeling that, you know, from what we've gleaned, thanks to some work on staff and their partnerships, there appears to be some, some cost-effective ways to continue to take another step forward. And I, I would just note that I, I think, in a way, taking a step forward beyond the state standards that we saw in 2019, wouldn't necessarily be a giant leap forward for the city of San Mateo, because, you know, we, the state caught up to us. So if we want to continue to be a leader, we're going to have to take that next step forward, again, in my opinion. So on that note, I, I would say that, from the discussion that's, this helpful discussion that's already taken place, you know, my feeling, for what it's worth, is I, I think it would be great if the city went ahead with, on energy codes, numbers one and two, and three, and, and the, the actual numbers on, on what that higher efficiency is, and how much mandatory solar installation can be further discussed, and with stakeholders and so on, to get a sense of, like, what's cost-effective. I, I share the hesitancy about onsite battery storage. I think it goes to a question of what exactly is the goal, and, and maybe that goal could be furthered through just number three instead of three and number four. And then for the green building codes, I agree with, going ahead with both of what was mentioned earlier. I agreed with what Chair, what Cliff said about his comments, I think, that were right on, so I would just echo what he said there. The last thing I'll just note is, out of, out of what was, what received cost-effectiveness studies, I, I saw that we didn't have a, a large multifamily option for some of these. But I, I am curious about mixed use. So like, mixed-use five-story developments, such as the ones that are going into the Windy Hills on KFC, et cetera, downtown, we have, I'm guessing we're going to have a lot of those. So I'm, I'm not sure if the commission is similarly confused and would like to clarify that, or if staff just wanted to see, like, whether, where that fit in. Thank you very much.
Drew?
Thank you, Adam. Yep, and come on down, Drew.
Good evening again, everyone. So on number four, I think there's a different twist, I don't know if it's allowed. It could be mandatory solar installation and onsite battery-ready for storage. Conduits are really expensive. Like, if those are run, even if it's never installed or whatever, it's cheap to add another conduit and stuff, to add extra conduits to do stuff when you're building these things. So I think that's a twist. Anything, and any of this reach code stuff that includes, like, conduit-type stuff, I think there's a big win ultimately, can be had. And things like, you already talked a little bit about panel size. If the panel doesn't have enough space, if you need more, it's just oversized, even if the, it's not, not being used yet. So, let's see. And then all-electric, there was some comment about that. At least where my spouse's condo building, it's essentially all-electric, I think, except for the hot water heater, since it's a centralized system. So that was built in the 70s, and it's still, it's all-electric and stuff, the pros and cons of that. So, but the water meter is a common water meter, so going back to earlier presentation. So I think, a thing that the city can do, there was a little talk about the laundry installation. I thought gray water can somehow be under reach codes, based on some presentation I went to. So that's something that potentially can be done, and that ties into, I think, there was some discussion about what can the city do to help. It's like permit fees, possibly. When I've done gray water, some exploratory conversations, it's like, every single output is another permit fee. So instead of like $300, it's now $900. And so there might be some incentives that way, where the city can do stuff, on stuff that, for remodels and stuff that, you know, for existing stock, that can help. I have got a long list of energy efficiency things I'd like to do. And then on that kind of remodels, there was a presentation I went to where this kind of got asked, and I think it might be a little bit of gray area that I would like clarification ultimately to be, is, you know, if a current homeowner's doing a remodel, or they're doing an expansion, at what point does it flip to having to do these energy efficiency? Based on some earlier conversations I had at the public, or the building codes desk and stuff, I started getting in, "Oh, you need to do an energy study, and you need to do this, and you need to do that." And I was like, "I'm not even doing that much, I'm just doing like a bathroom remodel and want to add a hot water heater and make it more efficient, that's part of a plan" and stuff. So, like fire sprinklers, I think it's a 50% hit. If you do 50% remodel above, you need to install fire sprinklers. So, based on the presentation I went to, it sounds like reach codes can apply to this. There is this variability of when they get implemented and stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Bring it back to the-
I have one more.
Oh, you have more?
I have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Penas Stoffer.
Excellent. Welcome. Thank you.
Hi, I just have a really brief comment. When you were discussing installing EV-ready parking spaces versus EV chargers, I'd just like to recommend that if the commission is recommending the EV charger route, that the city takes some measure to encourage diversity of charger types. I remember at some sustainability commission meeting in the past, Kathy said that there was one shopping center that had gone entirely Tesla, and so there was no opportunity to install additional chargers there. I'm sure all of the new luxury buildings that are going to be built will all want Tesla chargers, and maybe we can just keep that in mind going forward, since there will be, ideally, a very competitive market for affordable electric vehicles in the future. And I also support any measures that can update existing buildings, especially multifamily buildings. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Which actually dovetails nicely with coming back to the commission. Something I, I've thought of that, and it really does tie to, I mean, when we reach out, when y'all reach out to stakeholder groups, you'll get more input on this. But we're, we're all coming at it, I think, from a sustainability and environmental point of view. And, and that's great, but there's also an economic impact. And I'm not actually thinking about the developers, who are always going to understandably want to squeeze an extra dollar out. But I'm thinking of our, I'd be very curious to hear what housing advocates have to say, because we need more housing. But it doesn't do much good if you build housing that can only be, you know, is only affordable to the, the very upper echelons, because you've made it super environmental friend, environmentally friendly. Now, that may not be a problem. We may be talking small amount of the cost, but that's something to bear in mind. Susan, any final thoughts on this?
Sure. The point about the variety of chargers, that's actually a very interesting and a very relevant point. You know, Volkswagen plans to launch 50, 50 different types of EV vehicles in about roughly eight years. So, you know, and, and so if you think about it, if you have, if you have electric, but it's got the wrong adapter, and, you know, somehow, I, I don't know if there could be a universal adapter.
I can make one response to that. So since I had done the assessment of the publicly available chargers, most of them are Level 2, accessible to most all-type vehicles. And speaking with Tesla specifically, I believe there's an adapter that Tesla chargers can use, so that they don't only have to charge at a Tesla-
Okay, so a Level 2 can take any car, Tesla-
A Level 2, I mean, there's a, a universal standard for everybody other than Tesla, pretty much.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And the majority of what we have at the-
And then Teslas could use an adapter, okay.
Yeah.
All right. I want to go back to a point, Drew made, I think, which was good, is our policies. You know, I wonder if we've ever gone in, and it's a, and looked at our policies to begin to understand if and how they impede someone from doing energy and wa, I'm going to put water, even though this is not a water conversation, efficiency measures in.
So a lot of what Drew was referencing are actually in the state codes. So the triggers that require in the state codes, if you're doing, you know, some level of improvement in your house, that make you do a whole bunch of other level improvements for code updates, including energy efficiency and, and water conservation, are, are the way that the state is currently addressing existing building stock.
Right, okay. And so state trumps city?
State trumps city, and most of those code triggers are, again, all coming from the state. So we don't, other than these special, special reach codes, we don't have anything really in place on a city level that's different than the state. Other than, I mean, permit fees are something we set locally.
Permitting fees is probably where, where the city could have some influence on retrofitting existing-
That's sort of, that's sort of an education model. I mean, I had friends, neighbors, who a few years ago were doing more gray water and running into roadblocks, because nobody really knew what to do about it. I think the city staffs at that level over at planning does have a better idea today, and maybe it'll be better still in a year or two.
Yeah, yeah. And just to wrap up, final comment, because it's getting late here, and really appreciate everybody being here. On these four items, you know, frankly, I, I really have no issue with any of them. You know, my take would be to give the city as many options as possible. And I thought Drew made a very good point, onsite, you know, we can have onsite battery storage ready. Because it is just a matter of time before that one gets solved. And like I said, Tesla is selling a battery now for about $1,000, and, which is actually not horribly expensive. But, so I think, I like the idea about battery-ready. And I think, you know, all four possibly could make sense.
Thank you, and thank you, staff. Hope we gave you some meaningful feedback, as opposed to just volumes, qualitative as well as quantitative. And, speaking for myself. Lastly, we're down to the crystal ball and comments, or, excuse me, and announcements. Any questions on the crystal ball? I don't have any. Anything, Kathy, anything to add to that, or any other announcements?
No, other than I apologize that we continue to have very packed agendas, and we are doing our best to, to manage them, and-
I can make one announcement, too, before we close. Earth Day is coming up, and the city is hosting a number of Earth Day-related events. You heard about one of the cleanup events at Cal Water coming up, I think, this Saturday. We're also hosting a couple of events at the library, including an event on going zero-waste permaculture, for, permaculture design on Saturday, April 20th, and then divesting from fossil fuels on Thursday, April 25th. And then, we're also hosting an Earth Day photo contest, and so you can submit a photo of anything earth-related, or sustainable-related to the sustainability@thecityofsanmateo.org email, and be entered to win a prize at the end of the month. So, we're doing several things, and there's a lot to think about in this month of April.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you very much, thanks, everybody. We are adjourned.